Alright, I would like to call this meeting of the committee of the whole community of development. A meeting of June fifth, twenty twenty-three to order. Um, the approver, the approval of the agenda, I need a member. Moved by Council Martell, seconded by the Deputy Mayor Dilavat. That's great. Quick question, yes, so agenda is amended, I think, there's some new slides added to it as of four o'clock, second, correct? Yes, so, so when we do the agenda as presented in front of us now, or do we do it as of as of Friday's agenda when it was posted?
We need one of them to be able to do it now and uh, is printed, they have it in front of them with the amendments. Correct, so it can be asked already.
As presented, that would be my only question, just for anybody who might have downloaded or saw it on Friday, wouldn't have seen those things.
The chair has posted as well, updated a lot more in particular. You can do one of the last minute graphs where we have to obviously admit for your own. Days on the public forum. That will really be the amendment.
Yeah.
However, before we continue, you cannot want an additional amendment. Just returning some vacations to the taking place, so there needs to be a second by briefly.
Okay, so, uh, let's call that. Nine C would be reported, essentially.
We just video.
And this is recording. An eleventh major. Okay. Alright. So, so now that we have, that we have a member in a second, there of the approval of the agenda as amended, uh, we're adding, is he coming in close session, all in favor? Yeah, that's, yes. Alright, um, we have any business arriving, arriving, arising from previous thing? Minutes for anybody concerned? It's gonna be.
I have not, I can sort of check what, sorry.
Is it about business rising? Right back to you.
I don't know.
That's great, I just have to, I just have to do a number three, which is I skipped over somehow, a disclosure of community interests in the general nature thereof, does anybody have any? None, I mean, no, obviously.
Well, and that's appropriate, um, so business arising from the last, um, meeting.
Yeah, so now, so now, as far as business arising from the previous, uh, committee meeting minutes, uh, if any, does anybody?
Not me, no. I'm just about for disclosure of interest, so last week I refused myself from something and then I did a review of what, um, it actually means a conflict of interest. Um, and after reviewing, I, I think that I didn't need to, um, because there were no, um, monies involved, so I just want to clarify um, more of what a conflict of interest means sitting on this committee as an advisory member. Um, so I don't know if I bring that to the question again, or I'd like some clarity through the chair there about what that is, because I have no voting power on this committee, I am just an advisor. Um.
You're, no, just, you're an advisor.
I'm an advisor and my position, um, which is now president of the Seaway Hort Culture Society. Um, it's volunteer, everything that I do within the community is all volunteer, so.
Uh, I wrote, the clerk of CEO can help us out, I mean, you know, the refusing and refusing, uh, from last session, um. You know, I know we talked about having education potentially financial, not necessarily for you, but I think, but, but, you know, because even if we, if its attention provides a service, there's no value of that sort of, I think is how I understood this, but maybe we got some discussions.
So, the chair. I'm not legal, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not our interior commissioner, so I cannot provide legal advice to the committee or council member regarding whatever issue that is not exposed. And that's why I'm interested in the general. Same, my business. Um, if you go to the back section, back page of our bill of four, it aligns for members or committee members that, that generally base it on the two point five hundred fact. Um, for the purpose of indirect generating interest. Uh, the member, um, or someone's in their personal, uh, can be a shareholder director or officer corporation. Um, anyone who controls it interests in the corporate corporation or a member of a company. Um, and they can have career opportunities as well if that for him. Or is it for giving the family or anything related that may benefit them, so I was assuming in your case it may have been because this organization that you are a member of and now present of, that they could have received. They were, they were seeking they were seeking, uh, Mr. Chair, they were seeking in kind donations and it was, um, now it was something that we were part of, but we provide volunteer services, so we partner with other organizations that are actually incorporated, because we're not incorporated yet. Um, so in reviewing, um, what a conflict of interest is, um, it seemed to me that I could have taken part in the discussion because um, the money would not, or the in-kind donation would not have come directly to me. My partnership with organizations such as the Lions Club, the, um, Legion, even municipalities, we provide volunteer services to them for horticultural purposes, so I just wanted to make that very clear, and I know I had a board meeting last night and we will be developing a letter of understanding to send out to townships and different places just to identify what, what it is that we do. Um, but for future reference, if something comes up horticulturally, um, I, I don't, I still don't identify that as a conflict of interest directly from what I've seen.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know, as the clerk, I can try to highlight it, it becomes a matter of, you know, um, your feelings and I, you know, uh, if you don't feel you do, it just tend to come back that later on to there was something that most of you might, that may not, you know, may not be better, but may look, may have a problem for you potentially. I'm not saying it, what I'm just saying, from my perspective, if there was any risk at all, I would review myself as well. Yeah, let's understand, we got your board there, so.
Okay, um, just because of the, for the chair, um, I've never, like, do we all disclose, I, I'm sure everybody on this council's members to something. Right, members of churches, members of organizations, and I would imagine regardless of what, what memberships we hold, it will affect our decision making. Um, and as I am an advisory member, I have no decision making power here at all, that's my understanding, so I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep, thank you. Um, alright, uh, anybody else have any business arising?
Yes, thank you very much, page five, one oh two, inquiries and notes of motion number seven. Uh, I asked whether Canada customs sign and current boat launch, like, you know, what is status and if you do a chance to see notes?
Thank you through the, through the chair, we have, we have all, but, and custom, so anticipating that we'll be in our data sign there. Hopefully so. Okay, anybody else have any, thank you, business arising? Well, no, you're done. Okay, awesome, excellent, right, moving on to number five, delegations and presentations, uh, we have, uh, none tonight, uh, from that perspective. So on to number six, uh, A one, the consent policy review. And today we have Steve Pence and Jordan Jackson here from going to help, uh, walk us, walk us through this. Looks like Jordan's gonna.
Are there any recommendations, like, for you, my, here?
Uh, well, I've read out our agenda, but. Okay, okay. Yeah, you know, you don't have to go down if you don't want, you can do. Yes, we have.
So, good day, um, great people, I, um, started to meet faces, you know, that don't technically realize. Um, my name is Jordan Jackson, I'm a parent of no tech, and my students is, um, like, ready. Um, so the reason why I reviewed today is we were asked to prepare and sort of, well, I um, the township's concerning policies based on some direction that was provided from the committee. And so we prepared a report that's, um, uh, goes over and what people rooms. And so from what we understand, at the April twenty-third CDC meeting, um, the committee expressed some interest, um, to amend policies to permit additional law creation within the rural area. And specifically some amendments that discussed were to reduce the minimum law area to permit the township. Uh, reduce the minimum law shortage, increase the maximum amount of lots that may be transmitted from the consent application and then redefine whether it's relevant to the community. And the report, um, presented the overview of policies, some development you have in this township. Hoping that why official plan policies are in the United Counties of Lakes and Rennel. Um, and then sort of bring some items to the committee of some considerations that should be looked at when you're looking at additional development within the rural area. And so these are some things that we'll just go over this evening. Hmm, so, the township's official plan was approved in twenty twenty, and that official plan exercise, or that official plan um, to conform with the twenty fourteen provincial policy statement and United Counties of Lakes and Rennel's official plan um, was approved in two thousand and eight, so when we look at your approved plan and sort of what it says for growth within the township, um, there's a policy that speaks to councils setting a target for sixty percent of development to occur within the township settlement areas. And then forty percent, um, could occur within, um, your rural areas. Um, and then there's an official plan policy that speaks to limiting development within the rural area and to avoid, um, some scattered developments and inefficient planning. So that's sort of, uh, sort of the direction that's in the official plan and exists today. And then we're trying to develop into the rural area.
Yes, yes, certainly, through the, uh, the. In my, as we go along, is that okay? So, so my question is, is this, and, and so, like, the the, like, our last OP was based off of the current provincial policy statement, which is, is going to be updated very soon, correct?
Um, I can speak to that, I mean, if you don't mind, I can.
Okay.
Yeah, so there was twenty fourteen provincial policy stating that your current plan was based on them, and then now there's the twenty twenty provincial policy statement that's in effect. Um, and then with respect to your land division policies, um, there's a maximum of two lots that may be created and a lot size in one there. Um, the town's typical plan allows lot creation by consent and by plan of subdivision within the rural area. Um, so when we look also what was in the report is a summary of development policies within the United Counties, I mean, we look at other plans and what their policies are for the developments in the rural area, they have um, generally a maximum lot creation policy per se in the lots. Um, and lot size is a point four, point eight one hectare. Um, and then just in terms of some policy changes that are ongoing within the United Counties, um, that could have an effect on lot creation policies within Edersberg Cardinal, there's the mineral aggregate, um, master plan study that the counties is undertaking, as well as currently right now, uh, studying for aspects agricultural lands throughout the county. Uh, so that could have some potential input for command is down the line that may be implemented in, uh, this township. And then there's also, that was just released, um, a draft, um, provincial planning statement, um, from the province. Uh, at this time, that document has no status, but if there is, um, to bring policy that comes into effect, um, that could mean that there would be changes that the township plan would undergo to conform to that plan and policy change from the province. Um, don't know when that finally actually change, uh, right now it's just for comments, um, deliberately changed to whatever draft was released. Um, and then what we did was we looked at some development trends within the township to sort of understand where is growth occurring, um, um, and see if that's generally consistent with sort of that policy direction for growth to occur within settlement areas. Um, and then what we found since two thousand and twelve is that generally there's more development focused within the rural area, which is the settlement areas. Um, there's fifty-nine new lots created, um, and then a hundred and seventy-four building permits for new dwellings. Um, and then we look at the settlement areas, there's roughly twenty-six new lots created, uh, but one of the differences uh, within the settlement area of Edersberg Cardinal is diverse of draft approved plans um, that very recently had received some extension in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, so what we wanted to do was go over some considerations for additional developments, um, in the rural area. And one we wanted to touch on was the lot size. Um, the provincial policy statement today, the twenty twenty-one, um, speaks to, um, development of private services, which is important. Um, no negative impacts, so what that means, you want to make sure that if you're having development on private services, it's not impacting uh, public health and safety and water quality. And so there are some provincial guidelines when you're looking at lot creation or developing plans of subdivision in the rural area. Um, that lots under one hectare, uh, perform and demonstrate that the lot can accommodate private services, uh, through, uh, hydrology watch and for analysis reports. Um, and that comes from provincial guidelines where you look at that study, it belongs to the ones of the one hectare.
And, and sorry, we're just interrupting there, so, and I believe I read that that's sort of also, uh, in, in the proposed, uh, proposed new PPS as well, right, the thing that say under one hectare was, was also recommended to have a biological study, did I read that? Do we know that, or is that?
Um, I don't recall there being any specific in terms of, um, lots size. But I recall that there is some problem that sort of made any impact of the current uh, provincial policy statement in perspective during, um, not in our practice, which is of no negative impacts. Um, other considerations for development in the rural area, um, of natural heritage features, um, mineral resources and agricultural uses, um, impacts that we're developing and have on livestock operations. Um, and so the lesson is that the rural character of the U T prime is and the development, which is strictly elements in the rural area. And then impacts on town top services, such as, uh, several things. So with respect to the four amendments of the committee, um, committee was looking at. Um, when we look at sort of what the direction is for the township official plan, always grow within zone areas. Um, we feel a more broad official plan and then looking at some one of the things. Uh, or whatever, so you're ensuring there is no implementing policies within the plan and that your policy now for your, and you can slide on jobs of first development occurs. Um, one thing we noted too, within the report, we spoke with staff about implementing the current policies by delivering development inquiries. Is we found that one policy constraints that, you know, that comes up when reviewing inquiries is respect to one area, um, that is some constraint that applicants may have, is they're looking, they may be all on one aspect in terms of uh, to be covered ability, but the lot size can be sufficient. Um, so then they can get the official plan policies up, so that could be a policy consideration to look at for the local area. If we consider what the effective geological impact might be, and that could be something that, uh, that we look at, if we look at our management, township, municipal guideline events. Um, and then what we can go by, give a little bit of a brief um, amendment process that would need to be undertaken. Uh, so we could come back to the committee with a draft official plan and some amendments for, uh, councils to look at and see if you can leave. Um, and then we consult with counties, and then part of this process is there is sort of a question in the development focus is to have an open house and a public meeting where you are required to these amendments. Uh, there will be some decisions in council, and then the final decision, since this is an official plan movement process, will be the United Counties of Lakes and Rennel. Also, that's sort of just a brief overview of the report, like, Stephen, I hear that the council is watching, maybe.
Yeah, all right, um, Mr., anybody have any, uh, comments about? Miss Mayor?
When I look at all the official plans of, of actually nine municipalities, not Westport, because Westport come a little bit of a different bird, but when I look at all of nine municipalities within the East and Grandville, I notice that your company has eight of the plans and WSP has one of the plans, they have America. You have, you have done official plans recently with half an acre or point four hectares. And you've done them pretty much again. But right now, of the nine municipalities, five of the municipalities have one acre lots. And I tried to go through today, go through their official plans to see whether they have to have as part of a condition for the half acre lot, if they have to have a hydro G study, and I can't come to this. So why are we asking for a hydro G study on an acre lot on rural property? No, and, and by the way, I know this, I know this is, this is all in my, my head, but it's always been known that Edersberg, all Edersberg and, and also White and Carden, but Edersberg anyway always has had a high water level, so I don't know why, if it's not necessary, why we're putting the residents of Edersberg and Carden to one more. And you've, you've approved the plans without, by the way, the last, the plan I'm looking at is, is one of the most happens, which is a two thousand and twenty-two plan. It doesn't have the hydro G study. So, so why are you? And I said, just like, why are you pushing that now?
Why, I'm just looking at sort of the development shift to introduce to the current one. So my main thing to have sort of responsible growth, if you're looking at all the different policy changes is to ensure that some of them are developed or lot or create a lot, because we could, uh, that those services could be there for a while.
So, so my question to you is, what do we have to do? And what would you like us to do? There's, because to me, there's a difference.
What would you, we want to do?
Yeah.
What one of our recommendations, we think if you're going to increase the, the number and to, um, reduce the size, that how the policy should be, that you are asked to.
Yeah, but I guess if, if having a hydro G study is, is a drive policy of the Ontario government, then we have to do it, but it's not, let's not do it. I just think sometimes too many red tape and barriers can be ordered in place to stop development in this town, and I would think the problem is, need to pay for something that isn't required.
Fair enough. That, that, that's fair, I mean, I, I don't think that Jordan's gonna have the answer, you know, looking for there, uh, you know, I, I think that a lot of these things are to protect, you know, the township as well as, yeah, you know, you know, if somebody did sever off a point four acre, not that they couldn't, because they couldn't, uh, you know, subject system, I'm just guessing, but that's, you know, it'd be a thing, but anyways, okay, anything else, it don't be here.
Well, you, you, you know, Mr. Chair, you, you know that there are, there are conditions in place already. Um, I think whether the problem, what you want started off uh, is, meaning all the, the, the eyes and the keys, and we've got, now it's the, the subnation. The subnation would be involved because they would have to come in and, and do their process to make sure that you get sustainable for a class, to the class fours, I would use. A class four subject system, and you'll get your okay from that. So a lot of those are already covered. So, I just, uh, I, I just, I guess what I hear is a lot of. Perhaps not as many positive things that perhaps I was thinking that we would get tonight, but there always seems to be obstacles that your families are, are in our way. And I guess I would have been thinking that you need the, the presentation would be, but this is how we can overcome those obstacles. So, but it seems to me that it seems to me that, um, it's possible that, uh, some people in this room are all looking to change.
That's all. Uh, okay, so back to PPS changes and saying Bill, like, Bill ninety-seven changes, we we've had this discussion at, at United Counties, and you know, there's significant changes that are coming to this, and the way that it was described to me at United Counties was that our policies, municipally, and, and from that upper tier level as well, couldn't be more restrictive than what, than what the incoming changes from the province are. That the, the province set, like, that max standard, and you could apply that to go less than that, but not more than.
Which I understand which part of the proposed changes you're referring?
So, like, even minimum, minimum lot, like, so when it comes to the agricultural severances, or when it comes to the rural severances, uh, like, the new date that they would set would be January first, twenty twenty-three. So, you, you would have to be, that would be the minimum that you could have, you wouldn't be able to move that back to, like, twenty twenty, or something like that.
That was in reference to, um, that some proposed changes with respect to agricultural lands. Um, in terms of severances, I have to do a bit of research, but I think there there have been some changes openly, not proposed human policy anymore, I'm not too sure. But there were some proposed changes with respect to agricultural severances, so maybe that would be what you're looking for. Whereas this focus was on round plans.
Yeah, well, while ours, I just used the agricultural as, as the example, we discussed it from, from a rural perspective as well, from from the United Counties, our planner brought forward a document that read much like, like this one, and we thanked them for it, and then we did the opposite. And, and so it was um, I, I think for, for me, I'll just go this route instead, instead of, instead of a negative way, I, I think if there is a new policy statement coming into effect, that's going to guide the township official plan and guide changes to the counties official plans, my questions to the planners would be, what sense does it make to make changes to, to our statements now? If we don't know what those changes are going to be?
So I think you're suggesting maybe wait until you know what what the province direction is going to be, rather than going to see on policies in effect today?
Well, we have policies in effect today, but if those changes are coming as soon as Bill ninety-seven reaches its end and as soon as the provincial, all I get was today was supposed to be the last year early. Uh, they've extended that out to allow further discussions for agricultural severances. Um, but they haven't made any promises to make any change. Um, but they haven't made any promises to make any changes, just to extend note reporting. And I mean, we know. Those changes are coming and we know they're going to have an effect on our official plans. Why give direction to make changes? Now, if we're going to just have to redo that again in three months or four months, that'd be my question.
If I, if I may, I would say that. The, the topics that we're talking about tonight is just one. Piece of, of playing music playing and what sort of driven this town as the land development. Uh, the PPS is, is more like. Creating a document that deals with a whole gamut of other banking policy considerations. So whatever problems ends up approving in some shape or form. Will likely trigger other amendments to your political plan. So whatever you do now with respect to severances would just be one step. You may end up having to do a lot of other amendments. Down the road again. It's always gonna be a, a situation, trying to keep up the, the angles of the province. Have you heard Jordan say earlier? Your current official plan is approved under the twenty fourteen PPS. Since then, twenty twenty, yes, a few minutes ago back. There were never any amendments that were done to. Bring it to be consistent with that. So we're already behind. But if you wait for the process, you'll never be, uh, I think that there was a situation of waiting, so.
I continue. So. My, my thought though is that the province is signifying that, you know, their changes are going to be far more aggressive and they want to cut. You know, some of the red tape and that they want to allow, you know, more development, right? They're trying to reach the goal that they've set out and that's definitely different. Than when we passed our last OP. We've, we've sat through many discussions where, where we tried to convert, uh, land. I'm thinking of the highway two ones. Um. That, that, you know, it was layer upon layer of red tape, much like Mr. Dobie said, and, and, you know, study on top of study on top of study and. And it, it just seems like, you know, we keep laying out reasons for people to not want to develop in Edensburg Cardinal or not develop at all. And, and from my standpoint. Uh, I, I find that really difficult. Seems like we continue to lay barriers.
I think, I think some of the barriers that are. In front aren't always ones that they have, like. Of course, and, and you know, some of my provincial barriers. And if those provincial barriers go away, then first your time will have to attach to. Put a whole stick on it, can't remember when you have an official plan, you're bouncing public interest as well private interest. So I mean, you're trying to balance the. Province require you to do and then in some of those areas, you have some more flexibility. So. I think, um. I think that. In part, you're, you're right. You, you may wait and see what happens for. The province to decide on an policy status and then decide to do a plan that just bring it up to. So it was even better. And you could think of whether you can think about the plan you had in place today, um, the twenty-four, ninety, yes, seven, rural residential. Uh. Development, residential development in rural areas of limited. And so that's why we know that to say before it's split. And, and. It seems that the province is going into more of a focus of, of, well, that also gone away now. And they're allowing you to do more lot creation in rural areas. So that's, that's a positive for you. But that's not really, um, something we, you know, the way we make that change day on. But I'm just telling you that it's one of the other amendments that will probably fall out of, or will have to do a resolve and it will be, yes.
So, so if I can. Can I? Yeah. So, um, so to that point, uh, exactly. So. If we don't know what that change is going to be, I mean, great that we make a, apply for amendment to our OP now so that we could allow that or. Whatever changes EBLs that, that we can do that. If they're just going to change it in four months anyways, and say, we say. We're going to allow two more severances and they say that we can, we're going to do, that the ability to do three is there. Doesn't it make? More sense to wait?
Maybe one, that number of state referring to is the proposed. Number of residential units in a agricultural designation. That's different than a rural designation. So don't get fixated on the three in the world. You have ways to allow many severances that you can justify. And, and so it could be three, it could be four. Currently it's two.
Right.
And then called this zero.
Right. So, but my understa- and I think the reason I keep confusing them is that what we were told in our last. Planning meeting with the counties is that they're going to change the minimum size for all severance. That makes sense?
I almost think the product would be established in minimum lot size.
Okay, so maybe I'm misunderstanding.
The county may do that in, in county, you know, that's the other. Going to this part of the tournament is, is at some point, you know, you're gonna have to update this. And then the township plan has to follow that. So the wholly is gonna sort of, the province, the county, the Lord here.
Right.
And the town that was trying to make all the decisions when the. County plan, which it must perform to be as updated. And getting more and more data as time goes. And the provinces making moves and we don't know where this will land. So we're in a real position of uncertainty when it comes to what is. What's gonna happen? It's. Planning these days have been never so, um, never so very concerned.
I think, you know, from a United County standpoint, sitting in those meetings. The, the discussion there among all of the mayors was, you know, exactly that, is that it is a bit, a bit confusing. Uh, and nobody really knew, we always took. The United Counties as our, as our guide and then we knew that we couldn't really do anything. In our township that didn't comply with the United Counties plan. But in that meeting, from what we were told is that the United Counties is gonna have to make several changes to their official plan to. To relate back to whatever provincial changes are. So like, I guess that goes back to sort of my point, maybe I'm just confusing it, but if, if we don't know those things, how do we go ahead and make changes now?
One option is to just wait, but does so. Then make changes or you could make changes to prevent a lot area. Distraction or limitation where you have to have a one hectare. When we did it twenty eighteen, or twenty eighteen OP. We carried forward the principles from the previous special plan and established the one hectare. And so we carry that forward. In fact, I think that plan also had the six before it split, we carried forward. The idea was that we wanted to maintain the principles in that previous plan and only updated wherever we had to. To be compliant or be consistent with the PPS. So we, we, we didn't change anything we didn't have to. You have the option now to change that lot area requirement from one hectare to something less. And we're seeing that's happening with other municipalities across the counties. There, I mean, Elizabeth Town Killy used to have a one hectare and they dropped down to what, two acre. Um. And, and others that I think are at an acre as well. And so that's the option you can do now. Um. And, and in fact, I think there's a lot you can do now. In, in terms of your service policy, if I wouldn't touch anything to do with that, if, if that nothing has changed there yet. We don't know where the province is gonna land on that area policy. So I would probably focus on the rural services. And that's a couple of the amendments to reduce the area and the frontage and the building by law. That may generate some target activity because people are no longer have to create one after a lot area of shit. Too much, and but they live, they're able to get it at the time.
Let me just send you this person at the back there. Uh, when you're saying the thing, you know, that's just. Oh, yes. Uh, do a chair. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you touched on, uh, uh, Mr. Chair. That, you know, we can go ahead because. I wanna go ahead, I wanted to reduce it a lot. I wonder, we do, reduce a lot size tonight. I wanna reduce a lot front. I wanna put the number of. Lots up. That's my goal. Um, I, I don't like the hydrological. Thing that's in there. I mean, I just. I, I, I agree with Mr. Dobie, it's just another. You know, that, and, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Does Elizabeth Killy have that? Does anybody know? With the point, point four hectares or Athens in front of me on.
Um. Elizabeth Town Killy and Athens don't have a specific requirement for the hydro G. But there are policies that would enable them to ask for it if they still chose. And, and that is a trend that we're seeing as well. Um, you know, ten, fifteen years ago. Lots of them would never require a hydro geological settlement for the severance, but more and more, like I think your neighbors in Augusta are asking for it. And that's a trend we see. Another reason is cause outside this county framework, there's other, you know, kind of, or kind of that, I believe. It's just, it's, it's. It's, I think it's the right thing to be doing when you're creating one acre or sort of one acre lots. Um, not everybody does it, but the policy framework is there for them to allow for it.
I mean, and I think, you know, we're having one tonight, for instance, where a hydrological study was done and then. You know, at least in my reading, I'm, I'm kind of glad that we did get that information. Some of the owner has information, but I think it's, you know. Uh, it sounds like you were saying that it's sort of, I mean, can we also make at the discretion of, depending on some other aspects of the property protection, they need a decision where. You know, when we decide on this property, it might be it, or someone I'm wanting the property may not, did I, is that what you're saying?
I, I think I'll see, so maybe we're, we're on hydro development, so we can't. Um, judging for ourselves whether. One acre lot here versus the one acre lot here would be an average you allow to be different. So I would treat them all same.
Okay, I just want one question, one more question. So, uh, if, if you may, do a chair. So it says, it's gonna take us a hundred and twenty days. Blocks dirt now, is that right? Four months? To get this through.
So this is looking, this is a national plan and she, these were provided, this is sort of a general overview of what the official. And then process is, because it's an initiative process, there kind of isn't really a clockstart, that's sort of, um, clockstart the, if there's a performance. That comes in with an amendment for the town to make a decision.
Okay, so our, our, our first, I guess. Our first step to, to move ahead. Is to ask staff to make these changes if we want. Is that right? For tonight?
We would need direction through yourselves and through staff. In preparing events.
Right.
And bring that back to what we started with the Kenny.
Bring it back, another discussion if we're already giving you.
Well, we, we would like to share the draft amendment for your blessing, if you will. So that we don't raise something that is, I'm not being disagreeable. We'll take the direction and then put that into policy.
And then you're gonna come back with that, what we're trying to do tonight, coming back with that next month.
Explain, explain what we've done, how it worked. Subject to your inference or your agreement to that policy approach, so that it sort of. Achieved your objectives. Then we would be obligated to consult with the county on that policy.
Right.
To ensure that. Um, we have, we have a responsibility to solve with them, they call preconsultation, because they're the approval party. The county is only adopting the amendment, they're not the approval party. So we solve with the county to ensure that we will. Met that environment. We'll get feedback. They may. And agree with the amendments, have formally have comments on the amendments, but they may say, no problem, carry on. At least we know we're ready. Then we need to have an open house.
And has, then a public meeting?
Um, and then after the public meeting, at that point, then you're able to adopt. Adopt a amendment that goes to the county. For approval. They may choose to approve it as adopted. They may choose to reject it. Or they may choose to modify it. Yeah, they modify it. They may modify it in a way that you don't like. So that's how I want for. And then with that decision that's issued then, then we decide. Relive it, repeal it, re. Those are the trends that's best.
Good. That's good. Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
I have one question anyway. Um. Steve, you talked about waiting until the dust settles. Well, I've been around for a long time. Minnesota all of it. And the dust, like you said, it never settles. Because there's always something new coming down the pipe and. So I'm like, Mr., I'm like, like, uh, Mr. Delabar, I think you should go for it now and look. Deal with what comes down the pipe after that.
So I'm, I'm trying to agree. You know, one comment I would have is, I would, I would focus any changes that we make now on Wednesday. The one here to have a potential to be. Changed by our province. So something over time, really like one or two severances or a lot here, I think that's fair game. But if you were trying to make amendments on the basis of something that's in the PPS that has no statute yet, then.
Yeah.
And I think that's the best that I heard earlier about, um. I think Mr. O'Leary mentioned that you were hearing that. Um. There were things in the way and we may not have been. Um, trying to be helpful to achieve your objectives. I just want you to understand, we want to help you the best we can. We want to give you the best advice we can. We want to appeal it through an amendment that you think you have a great chance of getting approved. We don't want to pull down the road, getting to. Adopting an amendment that we know the county's gonna say, okay, they're gonna depend on you, the way that you don't like it. And then you end up having to appeal it. So we're trying to found that, you need advice. We know from experience bottom of the, of the counties. We, we don't know, we're sure, we believe that that average you allow was such that it's becoming more and more important. In today's planning environment and that's something that you may end up having over the left or not.
Okay, I think that was parent, I have, uh, one, one more. Question. Um. You, the company, you did the last official plan for Rita Lakes?
Uh, no, we did not.
Oh.
We did, we did, if you look at the schedule, it makes it look like local. We assisted with the mapping. But we didn't write any policies and didn't assert any policy developments.
Because I was just thinking Rita Lakes is the newest, uh, official planner within the municipal area. I was hoping that you guys had a done the plan that might be a smoother way. You know, you might know. What they're looking for. You better address that before you went to the county to make sure that they have it or not.
Yeah, their, their plan is important for them. It was just going to, and, and other, okay, right, the study phase of the new plan is there. So, but that means for their own plan, I don't know, but it's kind of that, but. Um, you know, we did not work on that.
Yes, um, I just have a question about hydro, uh, geology assessment and just what the, um. Resistance is to that is because it, there's a higher cost, it takes more time. It seems like an important thing to do. And I don't know anything about it. I'm just reading up on it right now. Right now, as I said, yeah, but it seems like an important thing to do when you're talking about quality of water and. You know.
If I may, there's, there's two elements to the vast, uh, one is to, um, it is relative or volume quantity. So you want to ensure that. A well built on property to support. Residential development, that the water is gonna be. Um, bacterial requirements as well as chemical requirements. So it needs to be professional standards. And we need to know whether or not there's any. Frequent requirement, ensure that it's safe and friendly. The second component of this is the trend analysis, which ensures that the. The land area, whether it be one hectare or one acre. And the soil conditions are suitable to attenuate. Uh, or to receive the alkaline from a subject system.
Right.
So we're talking about nitrate dilution. And you gotta maintain that within the lots, so different soil that you go on site. Might be that's like, yes. Except that, as well as a larger cycle. We're not hydrogeologists, so I'm sort of simplifying it, getting a real basic. But there are two elements. One is to make sure that the ground accepts the alkaline. The other is that the groundwater can be. Is it a state quality and quantity? Is it the state quality and quantity just work about it?
And it seems to me to share that that would be like the long term planning, that would be an important study to have, and that's probably why we're. Going that route. There you go.
It's, um, it's, there's always a requirement upon us to be.
Okay.
Um, in that case, you're dealing with all the lots. Right?
Yeah.
Maybe you'd be us, you know, um, more than just, uh, it's really lots, it's either handful or several lots. Um, but we're establishing the rest of the development, not establishing, or that principle is that somebody's going to live there and draw water from ground. Right? They're gonna do the private subjects of the, the standard period of treatment. And so those things not could work in order to do that sustainable.
Just so that I understand, so the hydrological study, uh, through your, sorry. Um, that they requesting in this, is it part of zoning by law or would it be, or is it part of the official plan?
It would be, uh, it would be a, an OP policy requirement. That would be applied at the time of the service.
So. So if others, I think like. Like Mr. Doby said, if, if others have point four hectare. Severances already, there's several, we're one of only three out of ten that don't. If, if none of them was have. Have this in. Why an exception for us to add it and anyone else?
Some of them. Have, but not maybe in this list of the others. Still have enabling policies required of energy, so support of severance. We're adding now to. Feel strong, more stronger, we're having that requirement as a condition of severance. If it wouldn't be tested, starting out to be something new upfront to the service, it'd be done as a condition of the service. So, um, it's just a different approach. Um, not even my here, but all of us, all of us, all the time, it's a requirement you get to creating a. Two, not to do a lot. But we still need to put a piece of.
Just. As, as one of, as one of N municipalities. Putting in more roadblocks for, for developers to develop in our township seems.
Well.
I mean, I get it from your planning perspective, from, from our government's perspective, it certainly doesn't, it certainly doesn't help with demanding that we have to, which is doing Greece residential growth.
And there, I mean, put it very well, we're trying to balance that, we're, we're trying to, a plan expected is instead of planning to ensure that. We're creating lots that we don't need service. You want growth, so we have to balance that, and so I'm not careful with any line, but that's not a condition. We can, we can write an amendment that maybe doesn't have to have any, that's, that's direction. Going with capacity and approval of the rate. We can try.
It's, excuse me, uh, okay. Uh, is this just for rural or rural and some? You would put that in. Would it be right under our official plan for all lots? Rural ones and not.
Lots that are, are wanting to be private service.
Like in spectacle, we have sewers, but no, uh, sewers, but no water, so that would, that would be in that.
Anywhere, with. So, so that, that's something we'd like to look at carefully and write in the notes, other than you were that.
Because we have one tonight, like that, settlement area, and we're asking for that. That's all.
Yeah, that's like I say, when we make amendments. So one aspect of the pandemic thing goes, they make that on other policies, so there's going to be inconsistencies. And just. Plan for makes sense, so we under, we definitely give that some thought.
Yes, the chairman. I'm not, I understand what Steve has thought about the separate banks, separate system and, and the well location and the, and the ground, uh. Different layers of different types of soil in the grounds, of perforation and the whole works, I know. But when you sever a lot off, the first thing you do is whenever, it used to be to help you, but now it's. The conservation authority now, the first thing that they don't, they're going to ask you to do is dig a hole. In, in your property where you want the subject system. So you have somebody come in with a high hole, they dig a hole, not a high hole, a back hole, and they dig a hole four foot deep. And then the help you, and then at the time, because I want to work with the health team, and I'm sure the sanitation is the same. They would come down, then they would jump in the hole, and then we'd take a look at every level of ground all the way down to make sure. That the ground is acceptable for, uh, perforation from the sewage system. So. And then the well has to be. A drill well has to be, and this is two years ago, and I'm sure that's a change, it had to be fifty foot away from. The, the header, but actually we were through, so I don't know what the hydrology study is going to tell me. That isn't about the subject system. That isn't already going to be told that from the hole that we have to dig for the sanitation to come, to inspect the park before they give us a permit for.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not having jobs against Steve.
I'm not a child to see them, but I, I think it just seems that, that we're talking about them doing the same thing.
Well, I would say for, for mine is that hydrogeology is going to look at it from more, they're going to have samples, they're going to move that, but the samples are going to be great size analysis, they're going to look at. Well, I'm running with a visual inspection by health inspector of the whole city. So I don't need it. There's a little more science to it than that.
And I think this chairman, I have one more question, I wish I might have.
One more question.
Some of the, some of, some of the, the official plan, it needs a grant. Do mention a hydrology study, but it's all, and. So let's say, for example, some of them that are, that are at, at the acre right now. So they will ask, so they'll say that there's a possibility for a smaller block subject to. I think a hydrology study, that's how the, the hydrology study falls in, but it doesn't fall in with. Getting the original one acre, except if you want to reduce that, they even had to start.
I'm done.
That's okay. I mean, it was a really good conversation, you found so much.
You know, if I may, because that's if I were to staff, that's what I think, or maybe, that's what there is in its net, right, at one hectare. Is if we want to reduce from one hectare, we used to have to go to the health department to have approval. To have a smaller, to have a smaller private system on that one hectare.
No, two hectare, no, two hectare.
I'm thinking of the corner of Hyman and, and twenty one or twenty two, whatever one of those. Because they've run to point ninety acres from two point, whatever.
That's how he moved it, right? They moved it, and, yeah, I know it, yeah.
And two, yeah.
Uh, anyway. I mean, you know, I didn't have as many questions as I did until we started this dialogue, to be honest, so, you know, and, 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 you know. I guess the number one thing, it seems to be the hydrological study is, 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 is a concern, so we don't have any data through the CDC, to the CDC with. You know, how long these things take, I mean, I don't think you'd have the cost, because that's something you have to ask, obviously, just. You know, do we know how long it's taking on average for people to get hydrological studies in history? You, you don't have to have, you know. That's for any, any price. I agree with, I was just, we didn't see a price, so, so we, you know, I mean, and, and I appreciate the fact that we asked, we asked. You know, we asked nobody to come here today to talk, because we're, we're trying to explore this in, in an effort to, uh, to foster more development opportunities. Um, and, and we, and, and we did note today, we have a severance that, uh, that, you know, when I looked at the, um, at the, at the, at the, uh, hydrological study, I'm. Glad we asked for one, or we got one, because there's information there that tells me there's, there's an asterisk beside this, this. This potential new law that we're going to be discussing today, and it's, it's, you know, now, now the owner knows, and as I was still come forward to come along and try and do this, to do it in the severance. But, you know, there is information that we can't get from that, that I think we wouldn't get necessarily before. Um, and, and I don't think we ask when we do a zone, when we do a zoning severance, um, if we're asking for them to do a septic system assessment at that point in time, so I think we still wouldn't have information. On if there was a problem with the lot, so, you know, it, that's where I don't know how we would go about. You know, um, what is the implication to the township legally or financially, if, if we let one of the severance happen? Where something got missed, and then, you know, now the owner can't build on the lot, so that's kind of my concern. You know, and, and so I don't, you know, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, there's, you know, to making sure that we check some boxes, that we make sure you give the best product possible to the, uh. To the customer at this point, and which will be the owner of the land, I think is, uh. It is useful, so I don't know if we don't have enough information about them, but, uh, I just have some concerns that were raised because of the discussion that we talked about this, to be honest, so. Um, I guess, so, okay, I don't know if we have any other questions, Tom, before we let, uh, let, let one of the next volunteer.
I have one, but it, 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 it's not, um. It relates to seven acres. And, and so, so it's, it may be a different discussion. But we have a specific example that we've given comment on to, um, the proposed Baker subdivision. Uh, which is inside the settlement area. And isn't allowed to connect to partial services.
It's, it's in the settlement area.
It is inside the settlement area. My understanding of this has always been that it wasn't in the settlement area and was never considered general in filling or general. Filling out of, of settlement area, and that's why it couldn't connect to partial services.
The, the, the concern about was that.
And I know this is a different discussion than if, than if we need, it's just, you're here and if. We're, we have to put comment forward, we're supposed to put them forward today, and it's been extended, and. I'm signing a letter to this extent of our partial services, so I've just been.
Yeah.
Surprised.
I don't have the answer, but I just, a lot of facts. Right, but it was a question of using partial services compared to others that are all into you getting a couple instances.
Yes.
And, and I don't think that the initial proposal was one of those instances. And so I thought that there was a policy, I think there's a policy, um, conflict.
Can we, can we review that, um, at an appropriate, an appropriate time then, because I think the words. In our letter, we are asking to remove the words within the settlement. Or outside the settlement area.
Maybe the chairman know, I, I think it's what, uh, I got. It's on a hierarchy, and I don't think. There was no one on, on following us to those terms. Or we also are. Or individual private services, and the only way that we would be known to develop on partial services. One that's already, is, I don't need more, uh, including minor, getting out, and. And, and the, the, uh, proposed subdivision would fall into what would be considered, uh, including or minor getting out.
Remember, that's the way I remember the discussion completely as well, but I remember, or at least the way in my mind has always been that it was outside the settlement area. I even have a picture of it drawn with, with the river being the definition of the settlement area.
That is, uh, that is the, that the river is the definition of the former place knowledge where, where the ministry is. Being drawn.
Yeah, because when I look at the, uh, the, I mean, it's slated on the agenda for something else, but the leader about, I was supposed to answer about it, it was, you know, basically. Along forty-four, uh, right until basically the, uh, where it meets the four sixteen, um, and along the river, on both sides of the river at that point, it splits around the bridge and does that, so. That's how I see that, I mean, this is part of the sound, right? Through the, yeah, the CDC.
Yeah, I think we're, maybe there is some confusion, is there a creepiness, so my thought was still within the settlement policy area, especially though it is zone grown. And zone by law still, the settlement was here, initially planned, we reasoned to, um, residential first, and see. In the letter, for the progress, that draft letter, we, we can't just submit. Um, we not only commented on the servicing policies within the settlement area, but we asked. Um, for them to reconsider, um, whether part of servicing would be, um. The policy was written, um, with municipal water and private sewer in mind. Whereas we have a rather unique situation that's been developed where it's municipal sewer and private water. Um, so we asked that we would, um, basically that typically from what they want for servicing. Also that they, that are fine, why we want to make it, they can fill in that note, because that created a little bit of confusion, and so looking down in the consultation stage of that severance. Also, in regards to servicing, the proposed, um, planning document. Speaks to part of servicing in the rural areas. Um, where our services. Have been provided to address failed services in accordance with that policy, and fill in on existing lots of record, being permitted, or just represent a logical connection. But what about leaving lots in the general area, um. If our official plan, I think, was going to allow, um, more lots to be created and through partial servicing there. We'd only allow partial servicing on existing lots, or could be allowed on new lots as well, so, um. So I, I think that's where the confusion came, because they're commenting, the rest of the scene was separate, and so I was, we're going to settlement area in regards. Um, specifically even that subdivision in mind, when the obstacle that we gave us there, um, and then also the commenting on that, that proposed policy.
I'm gonna trust staff on this, and I'll, I'll have to go back to the, leave, I know it's down, it's, it's a lot of different things what I have, but that's. Not unusual these days.
Uh, all right, um, we're satisfied, discussion, good discussion, I think we had, we had a lot, a lot of fervor there, did we give, uh. Uh, did we give the planner and everybody enough, uh, direction to pursue for further? Further near, so we something wanted.
The chair, you, you, you need to.
I mean, it was.
Motion.
We have the OP amendments.
Yeah, good, so, as discussed, that we drafted amendment.
So, so it would be, would be motion. The American staff. Official plans by law, can we, and correct it?
Reducing the lot area. Reducing the lot fronting. We have to.
Incorporate those foreign areas.
Yeah, increase the maximum lots, we had that.
We, we, we have to, we can understand.
All right, so we're looking for a mover to, uh, uh, create a motion to direct staff to draft an official plan and zone and buy a lot. Amendments, uh, for council consideration. It's good. But, so what's now, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dilabar, uh, all in favor? Yes. Hey. So Steve and Jordan, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, and that was good, and the session, and, but, but we had you here for this, for sure. Appreciate that.
Okay, so um, moving then on to uh, to action six A two, which has been approved for severance. Twenty-seven David Street, uh, through Bruns, Brunswick. Brunswick, Brunswick. Uh, okay, so uh, CC, you want to give us a uh, a set of conversations?
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have an application. That twenty-seventh street, as mentioned, um, individuals, potential, this lot, like a John Charles Street and on David Street. The property is a power public for eight acres, it's developed on the north side, it's a new dwelling, and it has access from David Street. Uh, the property is serviced by municipal sewer and private well. So the application proposes a new point two four acre lot with a lottery to be rented on Charles Street for a fair single dwelling. Um, so such plan is in the southern policy area of the plant and its own residential community in our zoning bylaw. And we know southern policy areas and nations are intended to be the areas of the package where growth will be covered. Uh, in order to optimize use of public services and infrastructure. Uh, the initial plan allows development to compete on parts of the community, those spent bill will need to allow for infilling and minor rounding out of existing development. Because we've already discussed today, um, provided that site, additions are suitable for the long term provision of such services with no negative impacts. So we determined that there will be no negative impacts by asking for a brighter legal assessment. Last, this is the application, the report concludes that there is a large quality and quantity support proposed development. It also provides recommendations for future well construction and maintenance on the seven mile. So the patch can implement these recommendations, um, and any future owners aware of the report findings. Through a development agreement that is registered to the property title, so um, we have a lot, so the owner would have access to that report and information to be made aware. Um, in the zoning bylaw, the minimum lot size for a single dwelling in the residential second density zone is point four acres where our purpose is proposed. The bylaw has lot size to be reduced where service can work equally, a high would be likely of that. And frame analysis is provided, although the bylaw does not commit a reduction to less than point two acres. And in this case, it would be just under one acre. So the application would require relief from this provision in the zoning by. I can read recommendation, maybe discussion.
Agreed, moving ahead, thank you very much. Okay, um, yes. It's got somewhat, oh, okay, uh, is there any discussion on this one? Where's? I mean, right, uh. Okay, so uh, so the recommendation is the committee recommend that council recommend in favor of B dash thirty-eight dash twenty-three. With the following conditions, that the applicant obtained relief from the zoning bylaw as necessary to address the deficient lot size for the severed and retained persons. And the two, that a that a development agreement is registered on title of the severed person to implement recommendations of the ideological study to the satisfaction of the. It moved by, sorry. Moved by deputy mayor Dylan, do I have a second or? Second by Kenneth Swatysmail? Right, right, uh, it's, uh, any discussion by anyone? Okay, all in favor? All right. Uh, all right, moving on to number six A three, which is an action um, for agricultural and their consultation.
Very easy with the last. Um, okay, so the county is having taken an agricultural land evaluation area review of the year. Um, the leaders named included by the plan in conjunction with a technical advisory committee. Um, and that committee is now in the stage two of the new process, having a used to draft, reporting that means the public consulting. Uh, so the county is asking for our feedback on the uh, confidence rate report that's included in the agenda package and then included in that report. So we can't be prepared by details on how land valuation factors and area review factors are determined and weighted to identify prime agricultural areas. We need a scoring system. So the land valuation factors apply to physical components such as soil quality, while the area review factors apply to considerations like recognition and. Uh, the recognition that some of the lands may already be each for agricultural. Uh, so the final score is weighted as sixty percent land valuation and forty percent area review. So I reviewed the draft report from the landscape and the NAPA. And with a large area set of the four a month and north of time, we should get identified to grab a prime, maybe a little later. Much of the area has a high land valuation factor of between forty and sixty, and the land contains class one of the three soils. Um, which is third and fourth soil, and the area review factor is between ten and thirty. Um, meaning probably containing land that's orange, green, and orange, and this relates for uh, I say sixty to seventy, remember for my college sixty seventy, and also seventy to one hundred. Um. Which is like a large area of agricultural land that several thirds we have like that. So most of the land are currently because we give a blue policy area in the project plan, some of it is highway for the control policy area. And some of it is in our future industrial part, expansion area that's identified in our. Um, and for the future natural park expansion area and the highway commercial policy area. Those land re design that we can pass there to locations in proximity to transportation infrastructure, um. The highway commercial industrial park lands are designated for non-agricultural use. Um, so the committee council may wish to put that back on the draft report and that may recommend that these lands do not be considered agricultural areas. Um, so the counties is looking for, we have a schedule, a public consultation meeting where the state will write a presentation and. Um, answers some questions that begin on June twenty-first. The county's wish to keep back a letter, oh, to draft a letter for committee review and it's passed this report with the region package. Um, for the consideration that can promise that can be once in a week to.
Thank you very much. Uh, now this. Yep.
This is gonna, this whole review, if it goes through, I hope that there's gonna be some modifications to the draft plans right now. But it's really going to get the back of the town to our. Because everything, so, of concession nine. And concession ten, we have a tenth concession, which is a half a concession, is all zone rural right now. And they're looking to pay big chunks of the Heimann Road and thirty days of agriculture, the large one. And it's funny, because you know, they, they tell you all the the uh. The different uh, items that they're using to develop. At some sort of criteria, you know, if you want agriculture resource land, and one of them is. But there is a Red Bull soils map, which was created in nineteen forty-nine. And it's the only map that is ever been created for a red one, and he said it went wrong. What's a nineteen forty-nine, it's got a great big map of all, all of uh, Brentwood County. So I'm gonna just, if you, my farm and the farming side, they're block thirteen and block fourteen on the south side of the Heimann Road. To take you up to the ninth concession. Uh, if you know the road from Heimann to Venter, there's an S corner, well, that's the actual ninth concession. So our farms run from behind the road to that one. For that unmaintained old allowance, unoverdowed allowance, actually. And I reviewed this map quite a number of times in the past, you know, and all the stuff, well, there's our. There's the the soil grouping on our farm and the subal legend on the bottom, there's a really colorful map. And all the different soils are are different colors, and then there's a key on the bottom of the map, which can see what could it is. So I always knew that our farm was poor soil. It's it's first soil, and the farm inside is pretty good, a great big gray mark around it. So I'm saying, well, we're okay, you know, even if they do go for looking for more agricultural land. So anyway, then once I got your page and was able to to see what parcels on the ninth concession. Were being changed. I got a big surprise. Because all that land that was identified in nineteen forty-nine was poor land, is now destined to be agricultural resource land. So I phoned uh, Mrs. Mallory. Uh, Elaine Mallory is the planner, by the way, very nice lady, very helpful lady. Um, you know, she's encouraging farmers, but it's want to take a white of land of a right, of a rural and with a negative agriculture. And uh. I've been going around with the neighbors, you know, and letting them know and. Uh, we're gonna send uh, information, this is not Mrs. Mallory, but nobody knows, but. Nobody knows that.
So the map on page eight six of one over two, just so everyone on the same page, so. There's, you know, there's some green uh, areas which are below the points, so they're three point six or below, sixteen, uh, one eighty-six and one eighty-six alone. And and so it it has, it has, you know, various color coatings of sort of rect, you know, rectangles on about a forty-five degree. Uh, and then it has big black um, borders, if you will, drawn in a section there. So the big black, what, however, this regiment is, the big black section is is going to become all agricultural, even though some of it is obviously. That the at the sixty percent uh, mark instead of the seventy percent mark, because it falls within that range, is that what I mean?
I don't think you're reading that correctly.
So. Oh, a page of the report itself, while looking at the county better to a cardinal layer maps I'm looking at, so um. On my document, it says, it says page eight six of one over two.
Page forty-eight, five.
That's right, forty, well, forty-eight, forty-eight, it's just, it's the same, that's actually the same, that's important, that's the one that we just highlighted, yellow zones. Because those are zones that were, uh.
Says thirty-five down this corner, this chairman, I think that sign is all the agricultural resorts. And 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 not black.
That's that's why I just tried to, so.
That's correct. As the dots is currently, as they may find.
Pigs, I started.
On on, I have the old package, I didn't have any one, so it's sixty-three of ninety-four online, I don't, that's definitely changed. Because I think there's two pages in the package now versus, versus ninety-four. Mine's figure, figuring threshold score by.
Those are all.
So, sorry, I just want me to guess. Mister Doby. China one meeting, sorry, just have that assumption, but yes.
Okay, I believe in the um, original pack, it became seventeen dot four. If you're looking at figure seventeen, there's a certain.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 so the, certainly, outline of the black, it says that it is official planted, and the orange that's outside of the black would become agricultural as well. And the area that's green inside that zone, this would not be longer, would no longer be agricultural?
Correct, the area that's green, it's worth a little, it's fifty, so it would not, could be used around the seven areas. So you would have a non-agricultural area right in the middle of the agricultural area, but the um, the orange is land scoring um, sixty. Uh, so that's as a piece of, not so rude, so again, from a.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, that's, so, no, I see what you're doing, saying, and so a lot of the orange becomes agricultural, and basically, uh, along, uh, basically along. The road, that 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 parallel is throughout the road, a lot of it turned to agricultural all of a sudden, I see the problem.
How did they arrive at this uh, uh, doing, Jack? It's it, it was for the agricultural, the poor lands, all right?
Pardon?
Uh, no. It was rural, and it was because agriculture was poor, so they really broke, right? So now, they changed it to agriculture. Are going to try, and how would they arrive at that? So it's like, oh, no. Like, how did they?
The new public. Process, that process is driven by the profits, and I think it's um. Uh, also adapted to be more appropriate to the county, so the landscape before it runs out, finally come that conclusion, so there's the land evaluation, which is a soil analysis. They didn't go to take soil samples.
Right.
The themselves are using oil mapping.
Right.
For soil analysis, um, and if it's five to three soils, then it's score between forty and sixty. If it's class four, five soil, which is lower than that one's scaling out, so the LE is where the sixty percent to the final um, rating. Let's work, and the area review is more forty percent of the bias score, and the area review looks at whether it's right into the land. You have a lot of like smaller residential lots there, or is it already being farmed? And that would be considered as as well, because the third would be part of the, is good agriculture, land, or good use of agriculture, so. It's made of sixty percent, they're not even a shit, forty percent area review, and then they come to the final score and.
Well, well said, well said, as confusing as it may be. Okay. So I I I am on a different page, and and so mine is figure eight. Um, on the, on the top right hand side, on the bottom, or in the top left hand side, on the bottom right hand side, it says May twenty twenty-three, and then the number above is one. It's the one that shows the sixty point zero one to seventy in maroon. And the the yellow and seventy point zero one to one hundred in yellow, and then it outlines the other.
So just, so that's page seventy-one of one over two, or sixty-three of one over four, page one, seventy-one of one? Seventy-one of one over two?
Okay. So I I think worth, worth noting in in this one, uh, especially in this one, is that. Is the sixty point zero one to seventy, and then if you read lands would be removed from prime designation. If the seventy threshold scenario was selected versus the sixty. There's a significant change, so I've asked at the counties that, because I thought it was strange that this map was provided. This map is provided um, in the documentation going further, but but it's never shown at this, at the sixty and less. It's always shown at the seventy, straight, or or however you say that properly, like, all of these are included, but they never show it with the sixty to seventy removed.
Chair, in face speaks report, I believe it talks about the.
Doesn't, doesn't show.
Yeah, considering just using the lands that scored seventy and above.
Yeah.
And then they looked at it as the pool, that's gonna remove a significant amount of egg, one for land, we firmly have, doesn't need the egg, it's gonna, we're gonna lose a lot. Perpetual that, that's the purpose of the study, so when they look, they consider moving um, scores that were sixty and above.
Yeah.
Um, it was much more consistent with what we have, right, across the counties.
Yeah, and I would, and I would say, and I think where I was going with that, uh, through the chairs, that is that it's actually, you know, I get that it, but it's already defined. In our OP then, as as prime agricultural lands, right? My concern is that lands outside of what's already, not removing ones inside. But actually adding ones that are outside of that to to the inside. And my understanding of it was nothing would change from inside what's already defined as prime agricultural lands inside those lands. My understanding and my concern is all the lands that are outside of those, the the black blocks. And if you, if you remove the the sixty to seventy portion outside of those, almost everything that's left falls with inside those blocks. There's, there's small amounts that of yellow that are outside of those, the black blocks. That of yellow that are outside of those, the black blocks, but there's not really that much. O- outside of that, like if you take all the maroon off that map. And you leave what's already written in as prime agriculture, that's already designed, or it's already stated that that's what it is. You're really not adding much to the map, there's maybe one or two areas of concern. Um. You know, for me specifically, it's it's a lot of the areas are along four oh one four. Um that are, you know, maybe development plans, um. Does everybody follow what I'm saying, I'm saying that, like, leave the leave the prime ag alone, like, leave that the block of the black blocks alone that are done, right? They're already defined. If you remove the purple. From outside of those those black blocked areas, there's really not much new addition, yellow. What's considered prime ag land outside of that, there are, there's a few areas for sure. Um but I really don't think that there's much defined outside those areas, which which has already been defined. That makes sense?
You share my understanding is. You would like to, any land that is currently designated prime agricultural lands, and the county's ownership, which you're going to stay. And any land that would be added with prime agricultural designation would only go in for seventy and above, which is in the.
I don't know that we have a lot of, a lot of choice in it, I mean, I think we already have a pretty good chunk of. Of what's considered prime agricultural lands already. Already protected, um my understanding was anything that was inside it was not, was staying inside. That was my understanding, uh tonight's the first night that I've ever heard anyone say that. That lands that are white on on this map would be removed from it, I've never heard that. I've only heard that they're gonna add to it, not take away from it.
I make this understanding there, if I if I had to make your comments, your preference would be that. Your ask would be that.
Yeah, seventy above, yeah. That would be mine, I mean, if and and so we've already had this, if I can continue, just for a second. So we've already had discussions and. Uh and and albeit I'm mixed up in some, in quite a bit of respects, I I thought I was well prepared, and it turns out that I was. Somewhere else eating lunch today by the sounds of it, um. Um but we have many layers, right, and we're we're putting all these filters for development on, right? Agricultural land is now going to be a. A development, it's not a barrier, it's protected, I understand why we have it. But if you're looking at it from developing outside of agricultural uses, it is a development barrier. But we've been protecting agricultural land, so. But from a development standpoint, it's. It's a layer that you have to go through a filter. Then you lay, then you lay an aggregate standing on top of that one, that you have to filter through. Then you lay a significant woodblock layer on top of that one, and then you lay a significant waterway. Layer on top of that one, and by the time you look through all of those layers, you're not really gonna have a whole lot of area left. When you're trying to reduce barriers to create development. And it's development that pays our taxes and pays road pace, development and pays for our roads and pays for our bridges. The more layers of this that we keep laying on top of each other makes it, well, the only ones that are going to be paying for that are the are the rate payers individually. And I just struggle every time one of these layers comes out, we just keep adding more, and we keep looking through the filter, but certainly you're not gonna be able to see through it. So for me, the more we can read. I believe in protecting agriculture, and believe me, I I really do, but but adding on. More places that we can't see through that filter, I struggle with that when when our mandate is actually.
Chairman, uh. What I feel, I feel sorry for the younger people. That have bought land, you know, rural designation, for example, I've got a neighbor who uh. Is in the construction business, and he's got his office in. Uh camp right now, and he'd like to have an office built on his own property. Well, and he bought it with respect to that, it was rural, and I would like to be able to build. An office on the building, uh on the property. Um you know, you can do a lot of things with rural, with rural uh land by doing OP amendments, you know? But you can't do anything like that with the agricultural land. So I feel sad for those people that have purchased those properties, and they're gonna end up in agricultural resorts. And they really can't do anything with their land.
No, I agree with with uh with Mister Doby saying. That land you're talking about, really, it's not agricultural, I mean.
Well, I'm not done with it yet.
And uh no, but like, like, oh, oh, God, I mean, you could, you know. Yeah, I mean, it's it's true, though, you know, you can have grasshoppers there.
You know what bothered me about the whole thing is we've got this map already, this forty nine map. We look at the humans there, you know? And go from there, don't fly a plane over top and. They will, well, this is one, and this is two, and this.
But this is why it's important to have our 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 tax payers involved in this, and to come forward. With emails and and, you know, and and spread the, hey, but we gotta fight this.
Why didn't the counties send a letter to every individual, every property owner, whose whose land was. Could be designated in agriculture, could could be changed, you know, and let them know that this is happening, you know, you don't need to let the ones know, well. It's not that everybody knows, you know, just to put it on the county web website, say, saying that, you know, there's a really coming to about this, you know? How many residents and leads and grandpa? Go on the county's website, uh. Uh so that's why we're, we're gonna put our all our faith in our mayor when we go to county's council. And I know he's a pretty good talker. And uh. What you can do to save some of this rural land.
Well, I think, you know, to that respect, uh through the chair, um to Mister Doby, you know, we we certainly. Uh at the counties have expressed concern, you know, like Steve said, as Deputy Mayor has said, um. You know about misclassification, that's a concern. But one of the other concerns is. You know, restricting residents. Rights for land they purchased. Um. You know. You know, develop also, right, and 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 uh. You know, uh by by applying a hundred acre law, you can see that even by looking at the blocks. You know, the lines aren't accurate, there there's not a whole lot, you gotta shift the whole thing to get the colors where they're supposed to be, and it's. There's a lot of um, I don't wanna say misstatement, but there's a lot of misunderstanding, you don't really even maybe know whether your law. Is even affected, so you know, by by this in a lot of ways, right, so uh certainly. Certainly raising that concern, certainly do not wanna see. Any residents' rights to develop on their land impacted by the law, and in fact, I think, you know, you hear. We speak all the time about creating more rooms to allow people to develop, if I would much rather see a farmer farming rural land. Um. And continuing to understand how important that is in farming the world, and then being forced to tone into agriculture and not even be able to sever a piece of our land. You know, that's a hundred percent for you, it's it's certainly an argument that we continue to make, I know. Uh Deputy Mayor has been at some of those meetings and and sat at the table in my absence and thinks the exact same.
And I, I mean, I feel very odd that they didn't, when they were doing. These scans, I guess, why would they not have followed the orientation of how properties are set up in the various areas as well, it's just. It's odd, they wanted a forty five degree angled everything.
Yeah.
Uh when they when they did this, and I mean, I don't have the answer on line, but. So is there no other, you know, I I saw that email that there's, you know, I feel like meeting, you know, and it's a one out meeting, it's not like it's. You know, we're having open houses every week for six months or anything like that, so i- is there any other open process uh? Uh what needs, sorry, to me, you know, the quarter, uh that where there's gonna be a broader information. I've said it before, this is made, or is that, is it just these uh these meetings that that, you know, to to Mr. Doby's point? Not that well advertised, to be honest.
The chair, this is even second public process meeting, or it's the uh. Uh I'm tempted to put the um the notice on our website, which I do some media as well, so if anyone wants a voice. Um. If it was moved ahead to stage three, there would be other public, like they would, the counties would need to amend their official. But I I don't know then, if they go to stage three, they're still gathering feedback on the public, so there's. Um a beautiful place you can provide feedback, you can write back in writing, you go to the meeting and ask questions. Um Steve's plan, the plan idea, there is an online survey coming from the county's website. Um, the chair, do that, do that. There's a lot of other ways to advertise things, I'm not sure what.
Well, yeah, that's what I was asking, is what are the priorities, is this gonna be, you know? Uh there's, there's, as you said, there's the writing, as long as there is, and the meeting, and there'll be other reasons, but.
Yes, Mr. Frank. Do, uh and I think I know the answer to this already, but just. For the record, do we uh have all of those, um have we done all of those? Uh sharing through through the township as well, or township website or township social media, and we put notice up in the newspaper?
The chair, we got the notice in the newspaper, is on our website, it's on the front page of your access, there's a website you can see, and the chair.
Yeah, we just, I'm also making a billboard somewhere up here, you know, and you do, you're ready, please, that's true. Um, okay, uh any further discussion? I think we're all agreeing, I think I'm agreeing with that statement, and uh, you know, and there's nothing we're gonna do about that.
Sure, we can provide that bit, so I have a draft letter, um they come, and they that's. Public consultation that encourages the counties to um to govern the constitution of the public, and also talks of the. County's carries their mistake, like. The letter um page, the request that they.
So page eighty one oh two, uh forty six of the two, should have the letter for forty six, forty seven. I mean, I think I'd like to see that in here for sure, that big kids and everybody else, uh is there not your head at the table, that we don't have that either? Yeah, we, I think we wrote something in that, yeah, more into the better, more feedback they get, right? You know, we're in, in, I I would say emphasizing our concern, obviously, we had a lot of discussion with this, and uh. You know, it affects people, and it's not really, you know. You're trying, but it's not getting the word up to where it needs to be, you know, but I I do think that they should have, personally, anyway, as a broader. You know, uh you know, one one meeting isn't always, people can't always make that, I know there's a lot of stakes for some people's properties. But, you know, sometimes you still gotta get to your job, and you can't take the time off, or whatever, so. You know, we'd like to have more opportunity, admit a greater time, we've got a few, as well, but. Okay, uh so this does have a um. This does have uh a recommendation, and I guess with that instrument, is there anything else you wanted to add in this uh? Uh this letter, if you have any. Any requests? Okay, so, uh so the motion would. Uh the committee recommend that council authorizes the bear to sign the amended letter. Uh and direct staff to submit the comment, then to the counties prior to June thirty of twenty twenty three deadline. Something like that. All right, um just send it anywhere, as long as you have a move for that. By Councilbody's mail, seconded by anybody, uh by Councilor Joe Martel, um, yeah, sorry.
So sorry, just clear amendment to the letter is.
Would. But, sorry, he let me, so it would be uh adding a recommendation that that uh.
But that they kind of these um. Mail letters to effective husbands, or, I I think I understand.
By the way, I I think we talked about mailing letters to effective property, uh you know, well in advance of of an incision.
No, one indication, it shouldn't be extended, the. Final line for comments and sending him letters to.
Yeah, I didn't think I got a nod on the heads on that, what is that, we wanna add that as well, extending the time period for uh for comment? Okay, and also adding the to extend the time uh the timeframe for comment, uh for people who want to.
In regards to this sixty versus eleven, we. Um, sorry, if you want to comment and what as well.
Uh I mean, uh from my perspective, seventy, seventy to the hundred, uh i- if we were, but I mean. Verbally, and I like to believe it the way that it already was, but I I don't think. They're not, you know, the provinces are enforcing the United, well, they're. They're probably have to, the United States has to do this, I mean, everybody has to do this study. Uh so to find the the agricultural areas as as they are, I mean, I can further left alone, but. Um I mean, if we had to choose between sixty to one hundred or seventy, I'd prefer seventy.
We don't have a paragraph here, talk to this.
Seventy to the hundred reduces by ten or so.
So, uh so we're talking about also.
Sorry, is is there any possibility through the chair who can? Add exactly what the mayor said, or something very close to what the mayor said, that our. A preference is just to leave the thing the way it is, we're happy with it, but. B, it has to change the market, I think we really focus on that, our. Our choice as a group is just to leave it the way it is. My understanding, the mandate, as agreed in my brief from the last six months, is to make things easier for us, it's missing the core.
That's, I mean, that's. I would agree to that statement. I think we just reported it, so that gets it so that we can re- read that they wrote, um and then nodding heads on that one. Right, so.
You got those three things, you got three things that are uh. And if I may, just one more comment, and it's just a mutual comment that that uh. Uh Mister Doby made, and and I think I understand what you meant by what you said, it's the United Counties' aid. Meaning their control of that, but it's not their request. Just saying to make sure it's not the United Counties trying to put another layer on, it's it's a requirement, oh, I I do it last time, yeah, okay, I just. I just didn't want anybody using this, it was a, you know, the county's initiative, it's it's, you know, they're doing it because they.
Great, um so you have what you need, uh we have a motion on the table, um. I think it was my mistake, move by, okay, so, okay, uh all in favor? Okay, thank you very much for that one, uh moving on to number six, P. Work and economic development, information on the Great Waterfall Trail Adventure. Later.
Um. Just a brief information, and this summer, the Great Waterfall Trail Adventure is seen placed along the Saint Lawrence River. In that section, so we're expecting about a hundred cyclists to travel through Cardinal Long County Road two in the morning of this fall. And the county has been asked, we become the water station for the cyclists, giving them an opportunity to rest, people have taken our water refuges. Such a great day to show some Edward's personal hospitality. So our water station is going to be set up at the Cardinal Legion. It's just a short tour off the river. Happen at that time. Um, and right here in the information box in the, um, environment, beside the legion there. Will provide some snacks, water, and give you the information. And they we need it all in a coordinator for any direct reaching set up to, um. To execute this so much to be more to unworking and leaving some of those.
Thank you very much, M D A. And I appreciate the fact somebody more diligent than myself also part with the construction we're going to run at that time. So, good job on that one. All right, any any comments or?
Yeah, just, um, and I I know the answer to this already, I think, as well, but, um, the idea would be to commit off of highway two. Go down to the legion and when leaving the legion, go back up to Dundas. On Dundas and then on to bridge and then back on the highway to avoid all of the. Construction together, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah.
Mr. Deputy Mayor? Yeah, a great idea. Um. It's I was approached by a compliment. On that same date, I won't know until Wednesday, but they want to do what you call. They want to have a barbecue spin off, like a competition, have five different. So I think maybe that would be too. Too, uh. Too much traffic that day to go to that. So, I I'll know more on 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 Wednesday.
The cyclist will be here for a total of.
Uh, we'd expect to be comment, whatever you thought.
And they'll get your.
Okay. Probably was making busy traffic, traffic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But also, you know. Hey. Okay, no, I I think it's exact, you know, well, well said. Traffic's a good thing. Um, good to see people coming through the area and the showing off our, you know, our local excellence. They very much appreciate that. Uh, all right, no, the comments, so we'll move on to, uh, six C for one. Uh, and recreation information on the recreation update. Wow, you've been patient sitting on that.
Well, we posted it a little day on the day age twenty seven of the media. Uh, we had a great break, which was in time, um, hanging in before. Those free popcorns or lots of games and maybe new food. Other than. Um, this summer, we're collecting most of the Cardinal Hall party on June twenty fourth. For the Rock of Five, um, there will be three bar of food. And the masthead for the lifesaving society, uh, but in the life bar bar will be painting its natural appearance. Um, swimming lesson registration and all other summer program registration will also be available. Uh, John, there will be advanced help for money on June twenty fifth. Um, that's supposed to divide Sarah, that then we're expecting her education, so she. Education, um, uh, myself and our partnership will also be attending that along with five of the life bar bar. Uh, so many of them for the fish and all other. Program. Will also be available that day. Um, the waterfront can't seem to be open upon June seventeen. The summer hours are Monday and Tuesday from four minutes every thirty. And Wednesday, Sunday from eleven thirty to seven thirty. Uh, the John's having to support phase one will be completed next couple of weeks. Uh, please to the long, he will be public and gentle will take place in late offices for the summer. Uh, stagnation conservation is supposed to be efficient in the Cardinal Office. And so it means more information regarding registration will be available. Well. Then this year exercise cost that depends on. Here's a summary here on Monday mornings and Friday mornings, uh, especially this season and you will.
Thank you very much. I think it was a, uh, you know, a a good summary of the things that are going on or going on. Um, I actually brought my my grandkids in on kids inflatable day and they had a great time. You know, it was, it was, it was a very fun time for them. They they had the popcorn, they. Other, other things that were provided as well. And it was just a good level time and it's, you know, I did, I did post on social media a little bit about this and. And I, but I did see a lot of the feedback. It was, was that people didn't know about it. And so, you know, I'd love to find a way as 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 a township to figure out how we can get the work up better. And I realize that some of that could involve, you know, some sort of a monetary requirement to help advertise or something like that, but. You know, and people would entertain something along that lines to get to that point, have that discussion, to be honest, to get it. I I do think a lot of people just stayed on it and they were, they were sad they missed it and that, you know, but, uh, but it was, because it was a well put on event and I'd love to see it happen again. But I just think people would, more people want to know about it and they just, they felt they missed the boat, which is, I think, so. Yeah, that's right. And I was gonna say now with that, and then I said my part, and on that stop talking.
Suggestion reviews. Through the letter, take over the parents. I don't know what days, what was going on.
He would cheer to, uh, the creation coordinator, uh, the seniors are finished now. Can we move in here? This Friday for open doors from ten to eleven thirty? Like, is anything going on? What time say, uh, children start their? It's not till July? Like, can we use this Friday instead of eleven thirty to one? Can we come in here at ten? So, eleven thirty, seeing the seniors aren't here this week?
So, I assume comedy guests.
Okay. Uh. So, yes, excuse me, to hear the chat to the CEO is looking at.
Just to, for the chair. Well, one session, one session.
This session and then take or lock it? Yeah, is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
So I'm just not sure.
Okay.
I I just think it's always one.
Yeah.
The one session.
Wow. Yeah, I forgot, right? Yeah. Okay, no, that's fine. Wait, guys, let me see. Are you good with that? Want you to know? Okay, well, that's all. Thank you very much, Mr. CEO.
Yeah, thank you. To the recreation coordinator, I just wanted to say thank you for for the report, the report. Thank you. Uh, for being here tonight to present it as well. It's it's nice to have you. Uh, at meeting and and making, making a presentation and seeing the things. Uh, that are coming forward, you know, and I think it's it's good for all of us to see that. Um, to see that there is some work, work getting done. I like, um. Uh, councillor Ward, I I didn't, I didn't go to the inflatable day, but, um, I think we might have been caught. Yesterday, actually, um, but I also, I didn't know about it until, until then, and so, um. Uh, and Charles didn't mention it to me when it came in, not maybe he wasn't interested, but, um, just. Think. That we need to find a way to get, uh, a little bit more of that information and get it shareable and get it out there for. For all the residents. Wonderful. We're doing these things, but the idea is to fill them up as much as we can. So. Um, hopefully, we'll be able to help you do that by sharing on our, you know, on our platforms and stuff like that as well.
And unfairness to Mr. Mary. It was a beautiful day to be inside.
Yeah, no, for me. Uh, but I I again, don't lose what I just, don't lose my first part of that because I I think, you know, having you here is good. And and having you here to present a report is is awesome as well. So, yeah, that's great.
Yep. Hi, I, this is fantastic. Um, I also didn't know about it. I was thinking, and I know the library is doing this now. It's posted on Facebook. And I think they're getting their own attraction. I don't know if you, if the recreation. Both on me and the cardinal.
Yeah, well, I mean, honestly, I that's, I saw it on Facebook a lot, but it was, it was only, you know, and now I. Maybe maybe our residents should, but I I actually have the township Facebook as as something I get notification. Oh, so I just said it that way. So I saw it last and then, uh. You know, um, and I did like it in a post, but I was on site there and I mean, it was, uh, throughout the day, actually, it was amazing, but it was, you know, through the day itself, it became fourteen hundred people saw it, I guess, at last check. So it was, it it, you know, just even sharing it down is gets the word in, sure. It's just, it sounded like that was a bit too late and, you know, and, you know, sure, there's still people, you know, not everybody's on Facebook. As an army is on their regular, you know, I mean, I think we can do our part to, you know, start sharing user earlier. Maybe I should have done that as well. You know, but, uh, but but I do think, like I said, you know, we may want to work on it. It's not necessarily conversation now. This is just an information item. But, uh, you know, I would like to see maybe there's some mechanisms we can, we can put in place and, you know, try to. Uh, without overburdening our, our staff for sure, uh, helping to get the word out someone, which would be great. So I appreciate that. And then any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. Rachel, great, very important. Thank you. Okay, okay, so moving on to number six, uh, C, discussion of the Tri Council Recreation Committee. The best person to bring this up is. Really a recreation coordinator for, uh.
Well, I think in fairness. Well, in fairness, Chair, I I don't think, and we're probably gonna throw this at Rachel and and it's probably not the, uh, no, she wasn't part of those discussions. The only two staff representatives there are the clerk and the C A O. So if anyone's to speak to it, I believe that. Yeah, I would have to be somebody who was an attendant. So I was trying to think, you know, I just didn't want to, they were the best justified.
The 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 side can go forward really for, uh. Questions. Item raised at the private council meeting and. Sort of refer to each individual municipality. With the hope that the private instruction. But the technical, uh, selection of, uh. Committee members is something that. The council wants to.
Absolutely. Okay, so, so first, I I will say this, I I did write, um. I did write, I didn't write all the members that were present that night, uh, an apology, but I did write the three C A Os and. And the two mayors an apology and asked them to spread. Spread my apologies. I I guess I was a little surly that night and, um. Um, I may have, um. Spoken, I don't know how to say this properly, but but in a way that that I, you know, shouldn't have. And so, um. I I didn't notice it at the time. It was brought to my attention and I certainly. Apologize for that and and I I will address our staff and, um. In those meetings from now on and no one else's staff. Um, and and I would encourage all of us at the table to do. To do that, uh, the one and the two people we have at those meetings are our C A O and and our clerk, and I think. It important that when addressing anything regarding whatever report is presented or any information that's presented. That we do that and then we do that through our staff until there's a terms of reference. Uh, put forward. I I, you know, I know we're here to discuss the recreation committee. But I I do believe that, and this is something I think that we can accomplish, and I I think we can, we can do it. We have two recreation directors. Between Prescott and and our own, and I I think, you know, there is a way we can get there, but I I think though the, a bigger discussion. Uh, needs to be had is that, that, you know, if we're going to continue. Having tri municipal meetings, we need to actually define what exactly that meeting is. Whether it's a meeting of council, whether we can vote during that meeting. Whether we can have an Edward's or Cardinal vote at that meeting or whether we have to bring it back to our own table. Uh, I think there needs to be a bigger discussion in regard to that entire. Uh, tri municipal meeting and we need to align. You know, codes of conduct, all that sort of stuff, if we're going to continue along. Along those roads so that we don't end up where I ended up. So, um, but when it comes to a recreation committee and. I fully support the recommendation that's here. I think it's a great place. You know, for, uh, for our creation coordinator to to get to get their feet wet. And, uh, and bring us back some, you know, really positive. Uh, some positive things. So, uh, I'm not. A hundred percent sure that it has to, has to have an elected council member, but if it does, then I'm I'm for that like this again as well.
Yeah, I thank you very much. Really here, um, I I think it's a great opportunity, but I mean, I don't think we need any of this at all. It'll be like members, staff, we can. We have Rachel, they have a recreation director, uh, somebody from Augusta. I think those three people should get their head together. Give us some direction, bring it back to each council. And do not think we need this, uh, draft terms. I don't even know if you ever get a form of fifty percent when you have, uh. You know, fifteen, like we even find your committee. By each, I really don't know if you would get a form. Of eight people, so. That's why, you know, as I just think the trade show and and our Christian and and Prescott and. And Augusta, let them get together, let them come up with some ideas. What we can collaborate with, what we can save on, second, and bring it back to the county. Is my two cents.
I agree with this, Dave.
I I think I may have been a little off that night, so. I I'm not saying we didn't, I I'm a little under a flag, so. I don't, I honestly don't remember.
It was a, it was a good suggestion, but that's all we talked about. And even the mayor, Sheriff Shanker, the. I guess in there.
From the, I'm I'm lost where you're talking about. That's all done. I'm drawing a blank where you're talking.
So the committee, not just heading the recre- pre-recreation records. Right.
Oh, yeah.
People, yes, that's all.
And I think to echo the, the deputy mayor of our fifteen, am I right in thinking that's fifteen? Well, three, three, one and one.
Of each, which rest out, that's to me. So in theory.
All five of ours could be missing. We'd still have ten people present if nobody from our council went and there'd be a forum. And we would have no decision making or nothing coming forward. And that, again, that's, you know, part of. Part of that discussion, like these things should be easy to come up with. I just think that making those committees so big are gonna be.
Crazy how fifteen people. Crazy. Letting go of the three, that's what we pay our staff.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Salavory. Smaller is better than bringing back.
Unless you want the three in this in the CEOs on board, but I don't think we should.
We discussed the two that they have enough work to do, that's what we were so.
Well, I agree there. They do, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean. Great, sure, but but I think it isn't a record, it it maybe for us, it's a facility manager and and a recreation coordinator. You know, job, but but it certainly don't have that.
I don't know.
Well, I'll say, let's go to the great.
No, I mean, and and I was, I was there as well. I didn't find you that bad, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, I, you know, I I do think that if, you know, the 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 committee itself. Uh, I I don't think it's something that we can have at that level there and 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 make it binding back to the township, but then let's bring it back to a committee here and discuss it. So I was concerned about that.
So, but and and so if I can in this, and I don't want to, you know, beat this up, but. It's a meeting of council. Right? There were, there were four people and a clerk present and a clerk taking notes. We have a decision making ability right there.
Sorry, I'm I'm talking about the the recreation committee I'm talking about here. I'm not talking about the the. For the recreation committee, I mean, I believe, but I think I believe, like, I got your exact opinion you do, that you and the deputy mayor do, and that. You know, one or maybe two members of our staff, but I mean, you know, I I I think, uh, you know, we have, we have a recreational court, a recreation coordinator. Uh, you know, it, one representative from each to come up with some great ideas is good. I mean, I, you know, I don't know how. Um, how often you would normally involve, uh, uh, members from from recreation organizations or from the, uh. You know, or or from the general public who do these things recreationally. I'm not sure if you know who do that anyways, and then. Use that to bring forward or need somebody on that committee, but, uh. Use that to bring forward or need somebody on that committee, but uh. And I, you know, and I don't, I don't think I want, I want to need to see a council member there, for instance, and that, and I think it would be something that. Whatever is, you know, looked at, reviewed and and, you know, ideas, motive that would come back to each individual counties, uh. And his council, I mean, he's getting amazing council, my, I think, so.
Fifteen people through the chairs, way too big, but you and me. But by the same token, you free them, you know, that's a quality, it's already a lot on the case. It's not, it's not, you know, there's gotta be a hybrid in between there, we've got like eating them to stab them or something like that.
Be cheap. Let them ride.
You want the right people, you know, sometimes people are creative, just, again, I'm I'm not dissing anybody, but just that your recreation coordinator doesn't make you. Have creative ideas that.
Right, but there are not another two there, which is three, and they can bring it back to us anyways, it still comes back to us.
I understand what you're saying, but my point is sometimes the 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 mind and thought you you want there. Could be to somebody from the community or somebody on council or.
But I mean, I I personally, you know, I mean, you know, I I just think that unless we make sure that, you know. The the the, you know, uh our developer coordinator has 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 rights to make big decisions, you know, without consulting her her managers or not, so I think she. You know, I I think it would be beneficial to have, you know, facilities managers as well to know sort of scope of. You know, other things to be able to consult that decision, that's where, you know, it it's two people, but it isn't, you know, hopefully these things don't take days to have a meeting. No, it's uh, it's it's coordinating a small hour, two hour meeting, in my opinion, isn't it?
I think I I I agree to an extent, but I but I also think that, you know, we have development coordinators for a reason. Uh if the conversations are going to revolve around the development of. Of that, maybe, you know, some community organizations, maybe a representative of that might might make sense, but. I mean, we have a coordinator for a region, reason, right, we're trying to, we're trying to collaborate on. On this, your development of of recreational ideas of, you know, use of our facilities and. So, so that would, I mean, we pay two of them between three town shows, I think. Are the, are the mandate, that is, you could use of staff.
I absolutely agree with you, but my suggestion would be let the three mayors. After trying to handle the council, they should be able to decide whether they need fifteen on a committee or other people. That we pay to the judge.
Well, if if I can respond to that, so I I think, in my memory, in my memory, that we we did decide. We did decide that that night, that the three, the three C A Os. And the three mayors or or, you know, the deputy mayor or or representative of each council. Could could get together and form, you know, some form of a working group, but I don't think it was just for recreation. It was so that when we brought ideas forward, they would be meaningful ideas, so we wouldn't just be kicking, that that meeting was about kicking a can down the road, right? Like, we we um, we want to prevent that, you know, the best we can, and I think, you know, there were. Three of us, that night, I mean, in theory, you know, with the terms of reference, it was a meeting of council. We could have, if there was something actionable there, we could have actually actually discussed it again at our council meeting. Right, and and brought it in without having to discuss it two more times, I just. I hear you, I hear you a hundred percent, but I I think, you know, this, what we're here to discuss is this. Recreation committee and what we want to go forward, I want to see a recreation committee go forward, I don't want to stand in its way. Um, I mean, if the other two say yes to this and we say no, what happens then? Right, I mean, I think, I think for me, I don't want to be the person who throws the the grenade in the room, you know, I want to make sure that we continue these discussions along and. Whatever it takes to get them done, I mean, if it means that I have to sit in another meeting, then like I said, I have to sit in another, another meeting, right, um. So that we can get this done, I I prefer that it was the coordinators and who we, you know, hired to to do those jobs. That had those, those discussions and then, you know, if it needed to go back to a working group to discuss that or come back to a table to discuss it, I would think we could do that. I want to see this committee get formed, I don't know exactly how that's going to work, but. I I'd like to see it less than five members from each place, but I don't know that that's going to go forward, right?
But I guess that's part of the discussion is, you know, what what do we decide to bring, uh, bring back to, uh, to like, the, uh.
Another thing, Mr. Chair, I mean, what I'm hearing is that, uh, that there is, it's interesting having some. Our innovation committee, it would be a little bit better, uh, scope. For reduced membership, that may just involve uh. Input from organizations as as required, and not necessarily as as presented that whole. Full brainstorming, uh, session.
I was just, I'm just looking in over now and I'm thinking, well, Sierra, is that what it's called, the? The recreation in Johnstown here, like, that's, that's what they do, um, if this is three different. Uh communities, if you had nine, like, one, one representative from, um. A rec- a recreational organization from each, um, that would give you nine members, you would need what, five for forum? Instead of three, you've got here three individuals representing the, representing communities, recreation organizations, so if you had a member from council, a staff member. And just one, meaning remember, for each. Of the municipalities, that would be nine, total on the unit, and you would only buy.
I mean, and then that would be powerful.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, you know, I, you know, I I echo the fact that I think we need to have a big meeting of fifteen people, I, you know, I, you know. No, sorry, I, you know, I mean, I I think I'm interested, the C A O, we've got somebody out of this and would like to, uh, you know, yeah, just like. Uh, you know, it would like to have more of our thorough conversation with the other parties at the right council, uh, at his level of attention, so, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Do we to the C A O, do we get the idea that this is a taken a rebet kind of discussion, like? You know what I mean, like, it's brought back for approval, um, or or is there some flexibility in committee makeup? You know, I mean, if, is, I mean, I think, so, here's my thought, like, we've had lots of different suggestions, we've had one, you know, just the coordinators. We've had uh three members, we've had lots of, but nobody wants fifteen. But what happens if the other two want fifteen and they're not willing to budge them, then it has to come back to us, or we're not a part of it, or. Uh where do we find ourselves in this discussion, like?
Well, for the chair, how, how how I would see this sort of thing out, is that, uh, that does not certainly seem to be a will to. Uh, a, if a member committee, right, we 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 would take those concerns back, I I would say that if. The uh other two municipalities are are sort of adamant on, you know, the, um. Membership and 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 committing the anxiety of this, it's something that, yes, we're not to come back for. Uh, let me say, maybe, and and council will determine, right? Okay, that, that's, I'm just not sure, in the. And yeah, what, what, what I, and the, uh, uh, the, um. Try council meeting, was the last thing that we wanted, you, every, everything takes so long before you get any type of result. Uh, with tons of reverence, uh, on that day, I'm just not sure that a fifteen person. Member field is going to expedite, I think it's going to, what it's going to do is. It provides an extended width of items that we should be pursuing, instead of of refining. I mean, only focusing in on a couple of particular areas, but here's the example with respect to the arenas and rentals. Right, there's been a a a meeting held with uh, with with Mr. Spencer, uh, Prescott representatives. And the hockey associations that probably were doing with respect to Austin, that to me is a real worry. Uh, uh, initiative, and it's going to get a, 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 a result, I'm just, I'm just a little concerned. Uh, you know, with the, with what I'm sensing is that. We're just going to have ideas from you, and we don't have the the staff resources to to actually. Uh, you you know, it does need to bring reports back, who's bringing more reports back? So I think reducing it and and maybe defining that 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 still. Might be a better return for 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 all parties, and we can bring that, that, I thought, concept back. Mr. Chair, yes, may I ask, through the chair, who came up with this next step? Uh, through this, through through the chair, I I I would say that this county council recreation committee was sort of, uh. Not over open. Early on, twenty twenty two, that I do, that first meeting, that's not made. And it's concept of collaborating. And it really didn't, uh, didn't seem to take the, gather that traction, so it's kind of coming back. To see, is it going to, if it is, kind of putting a timeframe to say that we're going to do something like that. Let's start from the form, something like, you know, I'm asking these three specific points, you came up with them, who said we should act, you know, stream this. Something that came out of the meeting when I lost my hat, I tried. You know, so it's not, that's who wrote the next step. Without adopt terms of reference, each must probably look for who who signed the use rules. Uh, I I I would say that that would have been, you know, sort of the significant recognition with respect to. You looking at bringing that forward in their interest, let's move to those next steps. So this came from the meeting, this came a little bit of a previous need.
So I I, I think we've had a broad discussion of members, do you think we have any members to talk about? I I just want to ask the C A O, do you have what you need to accurately represent what what folks at the table want? Because in my, my mind, there were a lot of different discussions up here about what, what committee makeup might look like, and. You certainly haven't heard more than three people, um, but I think collectively, uh, outside of, and I'd be okay with that. My preference would be one or, one or two, um. You know, I haven't heard much more than that, I just want to make sure you have what you need to go back in a C A O discussion. To say, hey, you know what, um, many didn't really support the, the membership, they support the the mandate and they support. You know, the rest of it, that they don't necessarily support, you know, the makeup of the membership, we don't have the resources to action any of those items, we don't, okay, and. Um, do you have what you need from us as far as what we want to see, um, from in for our membership? So I was gonna say.
I I believe. So, yeah, look, I I think, I I think, playing, playing simply, we're looking really, uh, uh, at maybe one or two of each municipality. Whether that's organization, whether it's not actually what, whether that is a council member, but actually, it's open for discussions. Uh, but really we find it new, it's a, it's a few active elements. And from. Really only involving organizations that directly relate to some of the actual fires, you know, it's.
Yeah, sounds good on on the membership side, so from the mandate perspective, is everybody happy with with this mandate, this?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a nice general statement on the mandate, I I, you know, uh, I wasn't sure if it needed to be refined to add, you know. Targeting certain ones in particular at the beginning, but I think that can be up to the committee to figure out what they think the priorities are, that can bring that back to in perspective, in my opinion, but. You know, the government's on the. Okay, uh, and as far as, for, I need a special for. You have enough, Mr. C A O? Okay, all right, uh, let's call that a good discussion. Well, that's, uh, all right, so moving on to the sixty there, uh, discussion regarding. Doors are open outreach display. Uh, and moving, I would like to see that this is a conversation with our, your development coordinator.
Thank you, Chair, uh, going back to the April, so you can see, I mean, um, they maybe asked that. Uh, the committee coordinator come up with some, uh, a display concept, they were discussing the possibility of roofing residence. For the doors are opening events, uh, some other scheduled events, activities, and features are acceptable here. Um, we requested the design compared to support, doors are open presence at various community events. Um, so the concept's been prepared very preliminary, nothing's been bought, which I decided is prepared, so just. Quick mockups of the concept, um, that could be used, um, a comfortable setting to encourage some. Uh, stations and residents at events, scalable, so it could be used, uh, a, a, a future group, or it could be used. Uh, in a smaller setting, whether it's in the last state, with, uh, features could be used outdoors or indoors. Also considered things that would be easy to transport, so those are the two feet wide, um. Retractable banner stands, I could use it as one free and folding, I don't know, that's using, use some of that could easily be thrown in. Want to say it hard, but maybe except if you were bringing it off or, um, to easily transport it, so just.
Yeah, uh, well, yes. All right, uh, appreciate the conversation, I, I shot the concept myself, I know you have had some discussion about it for other reasons along the way, and that. Uh, open the doors with my comments, Mr. Mayor, I think, your head up first.
I I love this, I, I love this, I, I think that this is, this is great, uh, great of the development coordinators, Ali, I I think this is fantastic, but. But furthering it, I think, uh, a perfect example is our last, our last council meeting. Um, where, with three presentations, and we did them in that corner over there with two flags as our, as our backdrop and. And, you know, we use it for pictures and we did our best with, with what we have. Um, but I love the idea of having an area where you can promote, where you can, you know, there's a lifestyle in this, right? There was water in the background, there's out or on that chairs, there's, you know, nice doors, it's, you know, it's kind of what we want everyone's preparing to be about. And when it comes to pictures and social media promotion and we're, we're doing shares and even when it is doing a, uh. You know, whether it was for Kate or Mark or or or, uh, Miss somebody's lodge, when we're doing those promotions, other people see those. Um, promotions on our social media and being able to use some of these, whether it's a trade show item, whether it's that two by two banner, when it's not being used for this. Uh, for a backdrop, for for further pictures, I think, it it extends, you know, what a beautiful place it is. So, so I think, yes, this is great for for doors are open, but obviously they're transferable, we could have them for council meetings, we could use them for. For picture opportunities, I think there's a lot of possibilities for, for this, for this, I I love the idea, uh, not just for doors.
I think that'd be a fun picture, actually, we could have to do a fun, let's sit down and wear neckchairs and having this, anyways, good opportunity to do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, uh.
I just have, uh, one question, so, um, the, the doors are open, the concept is good, we just got to be there, there. The people, people don't know, I mean, I had a good discussion last time, since Spencer, well, I could have had another discussion with another gentleman, but he came in. Eleven thirty, because he didn't know that even happened, and that's Mr. Burr, it's very, very accurate, he didn't have, he saw it's great. So we can, we can have all the most, uh, rent their chairs and and that, and I agree, it's great to take it somewhere else. But for the open. But for the open door calls. Uh, we have to get the public to to realize that we're there to help whatever, it gets a night meeting or at at their home or whatever. And we're willing to go. If they want to have an idea to improve our our township and and make a better place to to live and grow, so. I think I'm, I think we're missing the um point here, though, if if it's for the open door concept, we're missing the point. Of buying chairs and banners, it's. You gotta get it everything, every mail or a little box, give it every single. Taxpayer, big highlights, we're here for you, open doors, whatever, and maybe. Say you have to phone the township to make an appointment for us, and we can schedule on and something like that, if we're not getting. I mean, I'm guessing one, two here. Getting well at last for me, we haven't been at last for these, but last for me, it's it's practical. When you've got two, um I think here's, you know, I think it's, it'll pick up, but we gotta get to where they're. So that's my, it's it's fair, but it. Don't need, thank you, should have asked, but. It's called open version.
Has council considered going to different organizations and setting up there? Oh, just sore, I was certain, you know, talking about.
So, so uh I can't speak for council, I mean, this is where uh this was an initiative that uh that in conversation with with the development chair. And myself, uh you know, we we uh and and I can't remember who else was there, but we started a discussion about, you know, we're talking about doors are open and that. And and you know, I mean, I think it's not much of a secret that I'm a bit of a talker and I mean, I don't talk to much, we don't, because I'm very much without this. Uh, and you know, but 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 I, you know, I need, I need that stage, and and so, you know, I envisioned exactly like that, I mean, hey, you know, what if I'm uh. I'm uh, you know, going down to the Legion for uh for a special event, hey, I don't mind bringing a chair or two with me, putting something up or whatever else, and that. And that's my, and I know she can't speak for the rest of council, but uh, you know, I'd also like to have it, like I said, that that be uh, you know, it it changes even our, um, you know. Being a, being a special affair with something like this with some, some sort of uh head, as which we usually provide, and then, you know, it's, it's a very similar. You know, maybe it's a different backdrop or something like that to like to where it's put, where we take that to various trade shows, and it's, it just makes it easy and ready. And and you know, we just have sort of a pack up kit where you can go and and scale up for the event you want to, and then. So then, so I'm very much in favor of, of, you know, and it's not, it's not, it's it's an, it's an addendum or an situation of. You know, to the deputy mayor's point, you know, it's working, we gotta get them, I think that's another conversation that I think we should probably have down the road. But you know, as far as this goes, this just creates that opportunity to. Be where the people are as opposed to having the people come down, because we've had comments about the hours are not perfect for people, they're not perfect for me myself either as well. And and so, you know, um, how do we, how do we get? You know, the in front of more people, so that's, that's where I took this, and that's where uh when the CDC mentioned that, that was great. Any other comments on this?
Be careful what you ask for, I'm gonna be straight, but I'm not a huge fan of the open doors concept at all. I've got open doors twenty four seven, people calling when they have a problem, I don't see people coming in. To make an appointment, to talk with an idea or an issue, when someone has an issue or an idea. They're calling you now, I think this might be one of the major programs, that's just one guys didn't.
Okay, um, thanks for that conversation, this was just a discussion, so there was no. Uh, no action we're trying to put forth on this one yet at this point, or will we, will we be hoping to get use direction to uh. Uh, potentially start this initiative, when that's how.
In in two areas, I I I've heard on numerous occasions that I tonight. Nobody knows anything that's going on. And I I find it a little concerning in in some respects, because it it's more than a one way street. Uh, like with tax sensors, we have tax inserts, and I can. Pretty much be assured that eighty percent of the time, we see the tax insert. And the cost didn't recycle, they say they never knew anything about. So we're 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 showing, this concept really isn't about, instead of having individuals. Who had their way. For a meeting with 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 a member to the council, it's like, let's extend it out to. Locations where people regularly. Right, it's those, it's those events where where you're going to have. From that, you're going to get the word in. And if there really isn't the, there really isn't the interest in getting that out, we don't, trust me, staff does not innovate more projects. We can put this through the rest right now, and we don't need to go any further. What we were looking at was. We heard from council that they were looking for doors open, trying to get engagement. So shit was, you want that engagement, why would the workpeople harder on a regular basis? Did they want to have a chat? Because I think most people that they're going to give up time from their work schedule. On a Friday, come to a meeting, it's not to tell you how great you're doing. Right, it's what it's maybe, it's why we think that we might actually want to work focused on. How bad everything is, as much as what's working or where some things be improved. That was the, that was the shift in focus, but by by no means is this a bad initiative to. Us wanting to make more work for ourselves on the monitor. So, if there isn't an interest on pursuing that direction, work on.
Do the chair, actually, uh thank you, Mr. CEO, this is just a trial basis, was it August, second week in August, is it correct?
Through the chair, if memory is so be correct, it was going to end sometime the third of August.
Yeah.
And however, that was planned for the next twenty be, some programming initiatives. Um, and it would impact your location to both Cardinal and Johnstone.
So I mean, uh, we are, we can, we can, we can kibosh it if 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 that's the will. I just, you know, when when I go to those meetings, when when we do say you're going to be there, you better be there, and uh. We're unfortunate that we have, so. But I mean, that's a will of 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 our committee. Um, I don't have an issue like this, like uh, like Mr. Grant says, he's. These, these guys and girls have a lot more to do than uh put on a little bit on the internet and buy furniture, so. It's up to the committee, and you're saying no?
So, I believe I'm the chair. Oh, I'm sorry. With regards to that conversation, so, I mean, I I I think the probably the best way to approach this then is to try and actually uh. Uh, see if I can possibly turn the discussion into an actual decision, if you will, I don't know if that's possible. But you know, I'd like to uh, to see if I can get, so, you know, I think the best way to do this, and this is what I'm gonna do. From there is is, you know, I'd like to see if I can get a uh a mover to direct staff to procure materials. Uh, based on the outreach display provided this evening. And if I have a, if I have a mover or a second, or then we'll take it to go, if I don't, no.
Before you go from leader and second, or I I, you know, listening to the conversation at the table, I don't do. The open doors, it doesn't fit into a work schedule that that I have, and with the meeting schedule that I already have, you know, it's up to you for it to do. To do that, so I certainly will go with the majority of of what your decision is, because honestly. Uh, my discussions happen more, you know, when I'm out for breakfast, when I'm at church, when. You know, when I hear those things from from those community members, so. Um. You know, my understanding was that this was a positive. Uh, move forward, not a complaint session, that we always look for inspiration from these discussions, not from.
Ideas.
And I don't know how you guys can control, control that discussion, but before you go buying furniture and asking for procurement is something you should decide whether maybe wants to continue. Along with even having discussions, because I'm not sure that I've heard that both want to continue along with discussions. That's, to me, if I was, maybe the other members to see if they wanted to continue moving around with open doors at all. Uh, and then where you go procuring. Procuring items uh to go with.
It's a different direction, I don't want to take that direction instead, so uh. Um. You're the chair. Thank you very much for coming. Almost forgot. Uh, so, you know, I guess then the 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 direction then would be uh. Okay, like that. Um. Whether or not we uh uh we cancel uh the doors are open effective immediately. I mean, we know it's not going to go past uh July or so, we we lose two or three places to have it, so. Uh, maybe ended by June thirty, so uh have what we say, direction number one, uh is uh. To, is there any appetite for extending it beyond two, no, it's already passed that, right? I gotta think this one through, anybody any recommendation there?
Well, just do we want to continue with the open doors, effectively tonight, I mean, yeah, I mean, if 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 we're not gonna. If 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 you don't want to participate, I mean, I I agree, if if you don't think it's, it's getting, I I I like it, you get one or two people, I'm happy. Uh, I'm happy with the, you know, the talk to them, so, but you're right, Joe, I get more. At the seniors club of the region than I do, so, it's uh, it's all whatever, I mean, uh. I I'll put a motion that will 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 call it now, because we are losing this one next week, and Colonel two, we lose both. Okay. So I'll put a motion uh forward if you'd like to to disband the open door calls effectively tonight. Okay. A secondary. Second in by council, what is that? All right, uh any discussion? No, okay, our favor. Yeah, okay.
All right, uh so there's, there, uh moving on to then number seven, uh increase in notices of motion. Does anybody have any increase or notices of motion? Uh, Mr. Mayor.
I I have two, and one I I hinted at and alluded to uh earlier, but it's, it's that I believe. Uh, a discussion that needs to be added to. Um. As soon as possible for for the continuation of of the tribal municipal meetings is. Uh, somebody needs to bring form forward terms of reference, and and I, I mean, maybe it's a mayor's discussion with CAOs, but. I mean, uh. Not wanting to kick the can and and wanting to make sure that it gets done, I I seem to be the one at at those meetings that wants to. Develop terms of reference all the time, so, um, I think it's worthwhile having a discussion at this table, all these members would sit at that table, I. I would like to bring, bring that forward for a conversation to have at our council table.
Through the chair, certainly, uh, for another conversation with the.
And and the next one is, um, uh. I spoke with the CAO this this morning, um, today, I was supposed to sign the letter to submit our comments uh in regard to. Bill ninety seven and and PPS. Um, last week, the province extended the deadline, um, after push from. Uh, I think it was the OFA. Um. To to allow for sixty days more consultation or discussion, so. I uh spoke both, I believe with, or I emailed, I believe with the CDC and and the CEO, and had a discussion with him today. And and uh I know that we gave direction to submit the comments that we had, but they were based on. The timeframe that ended today, and they were based on a different discussion, and then there seems to be a little bit more. Uh, push from from OFA, uh to have have a bigger discussion there in regards to, in regard to. Uh, the agricultural severance portion, so, um. My thought was, I'd ask the CEO to delay, I didn't sign the letter, um, so. Uh, to delay that submission, we have sixty days to submit it, we can have one more conversation at the table to make sure uh everyone's talked to. Uh, or we can even consult with the OFA to see, there are several things that, you know, may come up for that discussion, so. Um, and if worse comes worse, we still have sixty days to submit the the same letter that we were going to submit, so. Um. I guess that's me saying, I asked him, um. Submitting that letter didn't make a whole lot of sense today, in the sense that that there's an extension in the time, there's a change in the brand, so.
Um, so you're looking for a discussion, uh just on the uh, the agricultural, we go based on, or what a record of that, or some more.
I think for me, it 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 just extends the timeframe, and I think it allows all members of council and committee that have. Um, know that second thought that they weren't going to have. Uh, to discuss that their own doors or or at their community clubs or with their favorite farmers to make sure that. That this uh, this represents the viewpoints that we should be moving forward, and that way, when I sign that letter and you move those comments forward, that they're very accurate. Um, in terms, especially if this continues to evolve and move over the next six days, I didn't anticipate. The province budging at the last, the last minute, have a further conversation, they have. Um, you know, there are things that that could be discussed, like with demon, right, like we talked about that today, where, you know, there's two plots of land. Um, that, you know, due to no fault of an owner's, um. This is turning into a discussion. The notice most would be that we have a further discussion, yeah, so then is that something we can.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I uh. I I would love to have a discussion, um. And and you know, it may, it may not be discussion that that goes anywhere, I mean, I I did hear the mayor said a bit about. Uh, you know, it's, it isn't too waste for getting the word out, but I would like to see if there's any opportunity we can have on, I'm trying to see if there's any help that we can do without using a lot. Um, people, resources with the township, uh to help me, we can get the word out, I don't know, advertising agents. And that, but I wouldn't mind seeing, and so somebody can do to help promote the tech, well, the area as well, as well as move the events we put on, because there's a lot of great stuff, and uh. That I do feel those missing, because, because, you know, rightfully so, we're not the experts, and we make it, we're gonna hit that people call, so I wouldn't say a lot of going on. So, first of all, question period, there is nobody in the audience for question periods, and we'll go for it, uh and then as far as those are. You have. I will let you, we'll go back to a seven, uh increase in notices of motion. The CEO.
Uh, I'm seven years old, and I've never known a sport fighter in the area, but now the big four fire. And I'm always buried everywhere. Uh, I'm just wondering, has anybody attempted to reach out to our fire department or any fire department in Syria? Because I mean, if anybody's seen it, it's forty five, that's big right now, and it's getting worse. Matter of fact, we can't, we're burned down, I just wanted to. I don't know how supportive it is, like, how the firemen, is there anything we can do as a township?
Uh, I I think through the through the chair, at this time, uh certainly, not that communication, it's been requested for. For 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 additional uh resources, uh with respect to that, you know. Uh, as, as, as always, should that. Usually civil government situation like that. See what.
Okay, so I was.
Mr. Chair, conference may not have a late notice motion.
You may, why does the, why does that stop there?
I have been speaking with some residents and caravans and including people, the purity of plants and some flowers from those village. I spoke with the C A O earlier this week about possibly using some municipal spots and he seemed to think it was. It was okay with the council, it could be done.
So what do we? So, so I guess we have to have a discussion on the first, right? Or is it a matter of?
It's through, it's through the chair, it, it just sort of looking for a general. So.
Go ahead.
Just with this. That's all I know.
Go ahead, just gotta be careful. They're behind the library.
I think, I think we can just have to get on it. But I think here, I think, I think you have an audit of heads here. Okay, alright, moving now on again. Number eight question period, anybody else? Uh, there's nothing, nobody in the audience right now. So, uh, question period, there was no questions. Uh, and then we're gonna move into closed session. Uh, so walk me through the process.
But by myself, seconded by Council, what is smell, this is the council proceeds into closed session at. Nine. Twenty-two. In order to address another pertaining to A section two, three, nine. To see proposed repanding acquisition or disposition of land by the municipal board specifically investor. B section two, thirty-nine, two, B personal matters, they're the identical identifiable individual including the district. Or local board employees specifically C A O and private park.
Okay. Very much. Uh, do I have a, uh, any comments on this? No. So for that, we're going into closed session. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh. Alright, uh, we have a motion to come over, close session.
Move by myself, seconded by Council, what is smell, the closed meeting of municipal council does now adjourn and the open meeting does now is during. Ten forty-seven.
Thank you very much. And, um, so I will, I want to also call the question. I want to call the question, uh, uh, that the closed session does, does now enter. All the bearers. Alright, uh, so, uh, to report is while this closed session, um, we, uh, we met and directed. Then staff bring forward a report with respect to industrial land. Uh, and we directed the C A O to do some additional follow-up. Um, I should add also that during closed session, we did extend the, uh, we did extend the session as well in the ten o'clock time of the evening. Um, so, so that's what we, we had done there. So I need a motion for adjournment now.
Oh, yes, it's moved by myself and seconded by, uh, Council, Joe Bartel, the municipal council does adjourn now at ten forty-nine. Ian.
Uh, you can sign them as chair if it's not, right, then, then they'll, uh, they'll.